This project through several meetings with leaders, including Dr. Burke and Dr. Schutte, we created this concept back in 2017. From the day I was elected, I had parents emailing me concerned about the car accidents and the the lack of safety protocols for this intersection. We reached an agreement between the school district to share the cost equally, both for the turn lane and sidewalk improvements for the safety of our children and for other pedestrians as well. And that includes this sidewalk that goes all the way from Meridian to the city limits of Wichita. In the summer of 2018, we had a traffic count conducted that showed more than 13,500 vehicles use this intersection every single day. So what all does this project include? It includes the sidewalks that I just mentioned from 55th Street and Meridian all the way to the Wichita city limits, which is about half a mile. And if you look up, you will see our most important piece of this project, which is our traffic signals and this extra turn lane, which will allow better traffic flow and will allow drivers to turn more safely. USD 261 and the city of Hayesville have been actively engaged in promoting the value of this project. I can't thank Mayor Armstrong and the Hayesville City Council enough. I know I saw Administrator Black was here as well from the city of Hayesville. I can't thank them enough for their support of this project as well. And the financial contribution from USD 261 is what allowed this to happen. So thank you to all the leaders. I look forward to this project being just a model that will have more to come in the future.
On behalf of the city of Hayesville and its residents, I'd like to thank Commissioner O'Donnell and all the commissioners that have been involved with this. They had the insight to really see what was needed and and backed Commissioner O'Donnell in taking care of this in a for the safety and the traffic light and the traffic flow that's been needed for some time, as he said, with the number of accidents that have been happening. Also, Jim Weber with the Public Works, making sure that this project was completed and done. As you can see, it's really a nice project and will really add to the city.
No matter how diligent our driver education instructors have been, the four-way stop, right-of-way rules have proved puzzling and in some cases, dangerous. This solution takes the guesswork of whose turn is it to go out of the equation. Hayesville USD 261 appreciates the opportunity to work with the Sedgwick County Commissioners and that they have given us this opportunity to partner with them to make this intersection safer. Thank you.
One, two, three.
On today's agenda, there is a proclamation declaring Suicide Prevention Week, a report from the Suicide Prevention Coalition, then a discussion related to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, or CARES. Commissioners will discuss school guidance from the governor's office and two items related to bid board. We also have a fire meeting as well this morning. Chairman, turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Akeem. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Cedric County Board, Cedric County Commissioner meeting, Wednesday, September 9th. And welcome those that are watching on on Facebook and YouTube and KPTS, Channel 8. Okay, with that, call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
In vacation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we all received a plethora of emails. Anybody want to point any out? We do have a few people are going to talk to the public comment. But as far as the emails, receive and file, a motion for the receive and file.
Second.
Motion, receive and file, the emails that we received. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, Commissioner Howell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to be clear, the emails you're referring to are the ones that came in through the public comment line, not the 200-plus emails I received personally on my own.
Right.
County email, right? Okay, thank you, sir.
For the, for the record, note that that we have received well over, I think it was close to 300, if I remember, emails since this weekend. But that being said, motion is second to receive, receive and file the other emails. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Okay, we have public comment. Tanya, the first one on my list is Tanya Hudson.
Mark Bennett first, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mark Bennett is first, that's right. District Attorney Mark Bennett, thank you for being here and addressing us.
Yes, sir. Was asked to give a quick update on emails I sent last week. You were, they were forwarded to you, they were emails I sent to members of the State Finance Council, very briefly, because there was a pretty good article in the paper Sunday, and I think Cake did another article about this last night, but to give you both, give you all an update. In March, when the virus first had an effect on Kansas and there was a shutdown in place, a bill was passed by the state legislature. The first draft simply gave the power to the Supreme Court to manage dockets, manage deadlines, that sort of thing. So speedy trial, statute limitations, you know, that sort of thing, the Supreme Court had the power under the first draft of the bill to simply intervene and manage those deadlines. The bill, though, as bills do when they're in the legislature, was modified before its final passage. And the final act tied the Supreme Court's ability to monitor deadlines to two things. One, well, really, really one thing initially, and that was the emergency orders passed by the governor. So as long as the emergency orders were in place, the Supreme Court had the power to affect deadlines. That was passed, time passed, legislature left Topeka, they came back for their final day of the session, I believe it was on Sunday, although maybe it was a special day, I don't remember the detail on that. But then they passed another bill. And this, the first one was Senate Bill 102, the second one was House Bill 2016. And the amended version in 2016 is what was called, the bottom line is, it was obviously very clear that the governor's emergency orders were not being well-received by certain legislators. And so they wanted to limit that. For instance, they stripped several things from her emergency powers, one of which had to do with criminalizing the failure to to wear a mask or to shut down a business or something like that. The other thing they did, and that had zero effect on what I'm talking about, but the other thing they did had an effect, and that is that they put a sunset provision in her her power to issue emergency orders. And September 15th is when that, that her power ends without, unless, rather, the Finance Council, of which she's a member, votes to allow her to extend the emergency orders. Well, fair enough, but by doing that, they have now tied the power of the Supreme Court and its ability to manage our dockets to an emergency order of the governor. So if the emergency order of the governor ceases, or is either through an act of omission or commission, either they just don't re-up it, or they vote not to re-up it, then we we then, the emergency order stops, the Supreme Court's power to manage dockets stops, and we have 150 days due to speedy trial if they're in custody, 180 days if they're out of custody to attend to all of the cases now that have backlogged. And obviously, you know from my emails to the to the members of the Council, you know, had they known, had anybody known that we'd still be shut down, looking, you know, we're halfway through September at this point, looking October in the eye, and we're just now starting to try to get jurors back in here to do jury trials? You know, if we hadn't known that was the plan, obviously, the law would look different, or at least I would hope common sense would have prevailed and the law would look different. They had just gone with the original version of the bill and allowed it to simply be in the hands of the Supreme Court, I wouldn't be standing here. But because it was tied to the emergency orders, there's a concern, a major concern. And I'm not one to come up here or in the paper or in the media and be hyperbolic and pitch a fit every time something doesn't go my way. But I reserve the right once in a blue moon to sound the alarm bells, and there is no way we can try all of the cases that are backlogged in 150 days. I need jurors. I just picked the top, the most serious cases we have. I have 140-plus off-grid offenses. So off-grid offenses include only three categories: capital murder, first-degree premeditated murder, and Jessica's Law sex crimes committed against children. I'm not talking about kidnappings, I'm not talking about second-degree murder or anything else, just those cases, 140, 143, I believe, as of last week. I need 12 jurors to sit in the room to watch each one of those trials. To do that, each sign gets 12 strikes. To do that, then I need 36 jurors to start with, so we can, each side can get 12 strikes. Just functionally, there's no way to start with 36, you have to have 40 or 45, because someone's going to have a conflict that, you know, I know somebody I can't deal in murder case, whatever, okay. Because of the pandemic, we're going to want alternates, so that if a juror comes up sick halfway through the trial, we don't have to start the whole thing over. So we're going to need one or two or three alternates, which means we need, you know, probably 50 jurors per case of those 140, just to get us in the door. Well, you know, I always joke about my math skills, but I can count at least that high. And that puts us somewhere over, you know, let's put it this way, if we had 10 judges going every week, starting next week, we'd need 500 jurors walking through this courthouse every week just to deal with those cases. And even if we did that, we could not get 145-ish jury trials tried by February 12th, which is the date, that'd be the 150-day mark. That says nothing about all of the other cases that have backlogged. And I, the point I made is, you know, someone, it's easy to say, well, I'm being hyperbolic, fear-mongering here, I'm just trying to, you know, make some political points. Trust me, I'd rather be anywhere than standing right here asking for this. This does me no good. I don't get any, you know, collateral benefit out of sounding this alarm bell. But I needed, if the, if the Council, the Finance Council makes this decision, at least they'll know it, eyes wide open what we're facing. I do have a Plan B. It's not a very good Plan B, but it is a separate plan, and that is, rather than playing chicken with with speedy trial and hoping I can, you know, play my cards closer to the vest than the defense bar, I'll figure out the top five or 10 or 20 cases that we can try at a time, and somewhere around October, November, we'll start looking through cases that we know we can't get to in time, and I'll dismiss them without prejudice, which means I can refile them as the backlog winds its way down. And that means I'm letting everybody know, again, this isn't a threat, this isn't anything other than cards on the table, you know, I'm playing poker with my hand open, everybody can see my five cards. The only choice I have is to, like I said, play chicken with speedy trial and hope that I can pull it off, or be realistic and say, no, I'm going to dismiss cases, and we'll start refiling them 50, you know, at a time, 20 at a time, as the backlog winds its way down. I mean, the problem is here, it's not, well, why, you know, why didn't we think of this before? We did, but we could not bring people into this courthouse by rule of the Supreme Court or by virtue of all of the different mandates that were in place. So the very specific thing I'm asking for from the State Finance Council, and I wanted you to know why I'm asking for it, and that I asked for it, is that they allow the governor's order to be extended. I recognize how wildly unpopular that is in certain circles. Yesterday, apparently, there were people, there were enough of folks who would have been irritated at that to link hands around Century 2 yesterday. Okay, I get that, but I have a job to do, and part of my job is to not only attend to the job, but make sure that the folks who are in a position to make decisions that can affect my ability to do my job are aware of the limitations we're under. So anyway, that was why I sent the email, that's why I thought it was imperative, number one, to send it. Number two, that it was important that each of you know what I've sent. Elected office holder like each of you, and you need to know what one of your colleagues is doing, and I wanted to make sure that I came up here and answered any questions you might have, because I know that among those 300-some emails that Commissioner Howell referenced a moment ago, you'll probably get a few about this, wondering, you know, why didn't someone think of this earlier? And the answer is, we did, but the decision was made, and I don't begrudge it, I'm not here to throw any shade at the legislature, but the decision was made to tie those two together and put a sunset provision in it, which I understand the reasons for. But at this point, we have not had enough time bringing jurors in to get to the business at hand. So that's why I sent it, that's what I wanted you all to know, and I'll stand for questions if you have any. If not, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, thank you, Mark, for being here today. I was quite alarmed when I got the email last week, to say the least. Can you explain to us all, when you say you're going to dismiss or, and then have to refile, what exactly does that mean?
So if someone's got pending charges, so I filed the charge, I've had the first appearance, which is, people will, will know what that is. You've seen the pictures on television of a video camera, somebody's talking to the judge. The most famous in this area is BTK, when he was on the television talking to the judge. That's a first appearance. You've been charged with X, Y, and Z. Do you have a lawyer? No. Then we'll have the next hearing. It's just, it's a thing that gets you into the system. Once that's happened, you have a right to a preliminary hearing on felonies. And after a preliminary hearing, the judge makes a determination, yes or no, there's, there is enough evidence to move forward or there's not. If there is, then the next step's what's called an arraignment. That's, how do you plead? Not guilty? Okay, what do you want? Jury trial? All right. From that moment, under Kansas law, you have, the state has 150 days to get you tried, to get you, get a jury impaneled. Now, verdict could take a month, but you have to have your panel, your jury impaneled, and the trial must start within 150 days if you're in custody, 180 if you're out of custody. There's one other thing going on here. Kansas has this statutory speedy trial, meaning it's a statuatorialized speedy trial, 150 days, 180. Not every state has that. I talked to some colleagues in New York State last week, and they were, I was explaining the situation, and they're like, man, we don't have a statute like that. They just go on constitutional speedy trial. Everyone has a constitutional right to a speedy trial. There's a whole body of case law that talks about what that means and how a judge assesses that. But Kansas has made it specific, and in my 25 years of doing this, I've never seen me or anyone else like me who works in my job come before you or the, et cetera, because we've always managed to work under that. We've never had a case dismissed around here for speedy trial. Instead, we, in a normal course of business, we can, we can always meet that 150-day, 180-day. But when we stop doing business for six months and the backlog, you know, begins, even though we have been very circumspect in what we filed, we have not continued to file at the same pace we did last year or the years before. We have, we've got, I've got 700 cases sitting on a desk in the DA's office that we have approved for filing, but we have not filed, we've not put into the system because we know there's no place for it. So we've been very careful about adding too much into the system. But murders are still occurring, sex crimes still occur, so there's still the public safety issue, we can't ignore that. And we file the charges we have to, and they begin to back up. So I hope that's not too afar afield, but...
Well, I guess my question would be if those people, the 150-day starts, right? So if you dismiss it, do those people stay in custody if they're in custody?
No, they're done.
So they get out of custody?
They walk out the door, and then a year from now, after they've walked around doing whatever they're going to do, and we have time to go back now, six months from now, 90 days from now, whatever it is, once we can get jury trials going, then I'll start refiling those cases anecdotally, as I have, you know, I hate to be blasé about this, but imagine, you know, a bar or restaurant, there's a guy standing there, no one can come in until someone comes out. I mean, that's essentially the process. I try 10 cases, we'll try, we'll add 10 more to the list, and that's the way we would do this. Or, why would you do that? Because if we don't, and I gamble wrong, if the, if we don't get them tried on that 150-first day, case dismissed without, with prejudice, no do-overs, no appeals. There was a reference in the Eagle article, and down, Mr. Lefler didn't have time to really get into it, it was a collateral matter, but there's an example of this. In Douglas County, wasn't the Cedric County case, but in Douglas County, two years ago, a murder case was tried, and the judge miscalculated somehow. I don't, maybe he got his math wrong, or she did. My guess is she was looking at maybe which continuance was attributed to the state versus the defense, but they started the jury trial on a murder case on the day 153. When it got appealed to the Court of Appeals, they said, it's wrong, case dismissed, it's over with. There's no do-overs, there's no, come on, you mean, it can't be that simple. Yes, it's that simple. 72 hours, it started on Friday, then okay, started on Tuesday or Wednesday, case dismissed. So I can't, I'm not doing that. That is not a viable option. So my point is, I hate, it sounds hyperbolic, I don't know how to do it, and it doesn't sound hyperbolic, but it's not. If, if I'm looking at these cases, very serious cases, and I'm thinking to myself, which ones do I have to try first? I'm going to do it, but at the same time, I'm not going to roll the dice, and maybe we can, because what if I wait till the 147? Okay, all right, I'll just dismiss it now. Well, fine, then I'm going to retry it, and I have to be ready to go in three days, to time it perfectly, to get it filed, and, you know, no, I'm not going to roll those kind of dice. The victim has a right, this whole system's predicated on the notion that defendants have a right to have their due process, and victims have a place to go to seek redress for their victim, for when something's happened to them. And I think that very seriously. That answer your question?
Yes, that does answer my question. I appreciate you coming in here and speaking up about this. It's an important topic that I think is very complicated, but people have to take the time to understand what this really means. So thank you for being here today.
You bet.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have two questions. Thank you for being here today. And based on the previous answer, I think I maybe understand this a little bit, but maybe you want to be a little bit more specific.
Yeah.
You used the phrase attended to these cases. What do you mean, when you say the words attended to, does that mean the trial actually needs to begin, or?
So...
What's actually the trigger that says, I've met the requirement of 150 days?
So from the date of arraignment, it's not from the date it's filed, but under Kansas law, it's from the date of arraignment. So how do you plead? Not guilty? All right. So we have 150 days from that moment to get your trial started, to get your jury impaneled, sworn, and ready to hear your case. Now, if the trial takes two or three weeks, or, you know, capital murder case could take a month and a half, we don't have to have a verdict within 150 days, but we have to have your trial begin within 150 days. So when I say attended to, that's what I'm talking about. Now, if people can still plead guilty, see people, we can work out plea negotiations, that sort of thing. But there's, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of, according to Ellen, I think we have Ellen House, I think we had 3,000 cases that had been filed at one stage or another, that aren't all post-arraignment, but they're at some place in the system right now, and that's, you know, just do the math, there's no way we can get all those cases through the system. I just picked the top, the worst of the worst, 140 off-grid offenses to illustrate the situation we're up against.
I guess I just, I did not understand the way that the clock worked on this, but I would say anecdotally, very complex cases that I've seen in the past have sometimes taken a longer than a year to get to trial.
Those with continuance, as long as the defendant continues it, that's fine, but the minute he goes, no more continuances. Quick example, the guy who was in Kansas City, Frazier was his last name, he went into the Jewish center and shot up the place, killed lots of people. He was a very sick man, as I understand it, and I'm not mentally ill, I'm talking, he was going to die, had some illness. He was worried he wasn't going to get his moment in the sun, is frankly, is what it looked like. So he demanded a speedy trial. So that capital murder trial was tried within like five months of the event, or by the end of the summer after it took place, because he wouldn't take any continuances. Yes, if, if the defense continues cases, I've, I've got a capital murder case here that's in its fifth year waiting for trial.
Okay.
But he's taken every continuous. I can take up to 150 days. On the 150-first day of my continuances, case dismissed.
Okay, that answers that question. So the second question I have is, I understand, you know, not, we didn't really have a good plan on how to deal with these cases when, when the COVID-19 pandemic started, let's say, in March and April. We've had quite a bit of time since then to put mitigations in place, so I would assume we're back to business as usual and under the, in the pandemic world. Other words, are you climbing out of the hole? Are we, are we catching up by doing things differently now, or are we still adding to the backlog?
There's no way to not add to the backlog. I mean, until there's jury trials, I can't avoid that. Are we doing preliminary hearings? Are we doing pleas? Are we doing sentencing, probation violations? Yes, we're doing everything else. All the other day-to-day work that takes place in the courthouse is happening. Now, we're doing it within the limitations that the Supreme Court has put us under. We have to, every time there's a hearing, I did two prelims on murder cases a month ago in one week, myself, and went in, called witnesses, had eight or 10 witnesses in one day. Each witness who took the stand, we had to clean the courtroom after their, or after the witness stand after they leave, those sort of things. It slows things down, but yes, we are attending to all that. But in terms of jury trials, which is the final, I mean, that is the penultimate right of an individual who's charged by the state with a crime. You have a right to 12 citizens, my peers, to decide if I, if the state can prove that I did this. There is no way to mitigate that. You either give them 12 jurors or you don't. And if you can't, there's no jury trial. If there's no jury trial in time, the case is dismissed.
I'll wrap up my comment. So again, just to make sure I understand it correctly, so I appreciate the complexity of what you're dealing with, and I appreciate you coming before us today.
Sure.
But the problem's still getting worse, and that's really the takeaway here. It's getting, it's not getting better, it's still getting worse.
It is. Now, it's getting worse at a much lower rate than it would under normal circumstances because we're being so careful about what we file. But, yeah, there's no way to avoid that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, thank you for being here, we appreciate it, and we appreciate you bringing us up to speed, and especially bringing the public up to speed on this issue. But just the bottom line is that the governor's emergency order runs out, I think, September 15th.
Yes, sir.
That's what guides all of this.
Yes, sir.
If she wants to extend her emergency order, that has to be approved by the Finance Council.
Yes, sir.
And if they don't approve it, then you have some significant problems.
Yes, sir.
And we might be putting murderers and rapists and so forth out on the street as a result of that.
And to be clear, accused murderers and rapists.
Accused, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, I have to, I'm literally ethically obliged to make that correction, so...
Very good. Well, I think that this is a very critical thing that the public needs to understand, that we've got a couple people going to be making a decision that is going to impact our judiciary all the way across the state of Kansas, and it is a critical issue.
Good point. It's not just a Cedric County issue. Johnson County DA's weighed in on the same way, all the other counties have as well. It's just a matter of scale. It's just worse in Cedric County because of the volume. But if I'm the single county attorney in Rice County or Gove County or whatever, I'm facing the same thing. Now, I may have 10 or 15 jury trials to figure out, but I also have 2,000 people in my county to figure out how I can get 2,000 people out of my entire county to show up, I'll need X number of jurors. So it's all to scale, but every 105 counties are dealing with this right now.
Well, very good. Again, thank you. I've already seen this on the news a couple times. I hope the news picks it up, any channel and any newspaper that hasn't, we need to get this out so that the public understands the severity of what the concerns that you're expressing.
Yeah, and the last thing I should say, in deference to the people on the Council, heard back from Susan Wagle, and she understands. And obviously, it's a bad situation, there's a lot of, there's a lot at stake for those members of the Finance Council, but I have every assurance from her that this is not lost on them, and that they'll take appropriate steps. So, but you still need to know why, and I still think it's important for the public to understand why Susan and Dan Hawkins and others may be in this difficult situation to do something that frankly, I don't think they want to do. I mean, let's put parts on the table here. I don't think Susan's a fan of mask mandates, I don't presume to speak for her, but that'd be no, no secret. But I think she understands there's, there's a collateral consequence to that. So I applaud them in advance if they make that tough decision, I hope they do, I think they understand it, so...
Yeah, and I understand that you have emailed every single member of the Finance Council so that they understand what's going on, too, and they're well aware of this, so we hope that we get this resolved. Thank you for being here.
Very good.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for coming here.
I did speak to Representative Hawkins, I've spoken to him twice about this, and they're in negotiations with the governor's office. He fully believes that this won't be an issue. Everybody understands that. Nobody wins if that order expires without this particular piece being addressed. And there are ways for the governor to amend it as well. So, it's not, it's not just the members of the legislature, it's also the governor as well, that they all have to work together.
She's actually on the council, too.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's the governor as well, it's the legislature and the governor on that finance council. So, everybody has to come together and do what's best for the safety of our citizens. So, anyway, I appreciate your dedication to that, and nobody is envious of the job that you have to deal with, looking forward, as long, as well as Judge Gearing, and our whole judiciary is definitely in unprecedented times, so.
Good to have a job nobody wants, yeah.
Right. Thank you for keeping our community safe.
You bet.
Thank you. And, Mark, you just have a quick question.
Sure.
Speedy trial, you've got other states you've talked to. Were, speedy trial is a constitutional, it's constitutionally.
Protected.
Protected anyway.
Mandated, yeah.
Mandated. Our state, this is 20 years ago or so, we did a.
It's been longer than that, and it used to be 90 days, they extended it to 150. It was just a way to keep things moving. And I'll have to go back, I want to say it started, it's been on the books as long as I've been in practice. There is no, the Constitution does not say speedy trial within X number of days, it just says the constitutional right to speedy trial, because it could be different for each situation, and so it gives judges the discretion. So, Kansas just basically doubled down years ago and said, "We're going to put an actual timeframe on that," which, again, we've never had a problem meeting. It's just, it's an impossibility to fully mitigate, to come up with some workaround when we're just shut down, when we cannot bring jurors in.
To avoid, I guess I'm guessing, or I'm asking, would it be worth us to, as this is going on, to put this on our legislative agenda, to repeal the speedy trial?
Let's put this way, I think there will be some.
We have two legislators, would that be something that we would.
I think that's probably, yeah, you can't.
For January.
Yeah, for January, it's, let's put this way, even when we start going back to, you know, things go back to some sense of normal, it's going to take the system a while to catch up. I think that the short-term answer is to suspend speedy trial, some statutory. We still have constitutional, there's nothing I can do to stop that, and if a judge, or the 10th Circuit, or Supreme Court for that matter, makes a decision that in this case that guy's rights were violated, so be it. But this, frankly, kind of an arbitrary, just number in the sand, or line in the sand, rather, yes, I think that'll have to be suspended at least, if not repealed. But I think suspending it for two to three years to allow the courts to get through this is probably the next legislative agenda, but first step is get through this, vote with the council.
Okay. Well, thank you. I don't see any other questions, Mark. Thanks, thanks for the job you do. Appreciate the update. Okay, we go to the public agenda. We have Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to talk for a moment before we get to public agenda. We have a bit of a problem going on that I need to raise a little bit here. We have, on our website, we have information that the public can look at, that talks about how to address the commission. It says, basically, any member of the public may address, may request to address the Board of County Commissioners through either of two procedures, and it basically just says that they can sign up to speak on Wednesday mornings before our meeting. There is another place on our website where it says they need to sign up the day before. So, we have a conflict on our website, and I'll just say this, yesterday during the Wichita City Council meeting, I watched that meeting for seven hours, I listened to 121 people speak, they had five minutes each, and a very, very patient council, and I thought it was a very respectful process. When I became the commissioner here back in 20, January 2015, we had a policy back in the day that said you had to sign up, sign up to be, sign up to address the county commissioners, and you had to actually appear on the agenda. And we changed that as a commissioner, we addressed this as commissioners, and changed our policy so that people could show up on Wednesday morning prior to our meeting without advance notice, and sign up to speak, and really raise any issue they wanted to during public comment. During the, during this pandemic, we've adjusted that policy, obviously, because we didn't want to bring lots of public into this community, into this, into this boardroom, and so we've allowed the policy to say that we would do online comments primarily, and that's how we've been doing this for a while. Since we have Plexiglas in our chambers now, we have allowed people to sign up to speak, and for the last two months, maybe, we've had people sign up to speak, and that's what the website says in one part of the website, that you can sign up to speak as long as you sign up for 5:00 on Tuesday, that you can come before us in the commission chambers and speak to us as long as you wear a mask. And then, the last three meetings we've had, we've had people who showed up here who did not want to wear a mask, or were unable to wear a mask, and they've made the case that they still, they still have a right to address the commissioners. And so, we have now technology in place, just like Wichita does, Wichita uses Century 2, we have an area in our lobby downstairs where the public can come and address the commission virtually. In fact, I think one of the five today plans to do that today. I have received information this morning that we have about 12 people downstairs that showed up this morning that want to speak to the commissioners. And I would say now that we have the technology in place for them to do that, there's no longer an issue of people carrying the coronavirus into our chambers, if they're separated from us virtually downstairs. And so, the policy that will allow them to sign up to speak on Wednesday mornings prior to our meeting, I think, is still the policy we have to be embracing. If you took 12 people times three minutes apiece, you're talking 40 minutes added to our, to our agenda today. I think we should hear from the people, and I would like to make a motion that we would allow those 12 people to speak to the commission this morning, even though they didn't sign up to speak, because our website does indicate that they can do so. I don't think a policy should change administratively. I think we did it for a while, because there was really no other workaround, but now we have a workaround. I think those people in the lobby have a right to speak to the commission, and I would like to see them, now that they're here, I'd like to see them be given that opportunity to speak before the commission today. So, I'll make that motion this morning.
Okay. And we have been practicing this 5:00 Tuesday request to speak, request to submit forms, it's been going on really since the pandemic started in March, it's nearly six months. I'm reluctant to just change the policy on a whim real quick, even though we've got a, apparently, a website says one thing, and the, what we've been practicing, based on, a lot has also been by the courts, with Judge Goring and others. And so, I'm more than happy to make a motion that we change the website to say, "You need to sign up and request to speak and submit your stuff by 5:00 on Tuesday," which is what we've done, been practicing. We can just formalize that they need to do it. I'll make a substitute motion that we formalize on our website, and others, that the deadline to sign up to address the commission is 5:00 on the public agenda. We do have, we do have new businesses where we open up on a new business item, we open up a comment on a new business item that they can address on new business. So, I'll make a substitute motion that we, that we make clear to the public on our website that we request, if you request to speak to the commission, submit by 5:00 on the Tuesday before the Wednesday meeting.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
So, Mr. Chairman, I understand the justification for the substitute motion, and I would have a question for you. Is this temporary, and we plan to go back to our regular policy at some point in the future? When, I guess, when the health orders cease, would this go back to our normal process of allowing people to sign up before our meetings to speak? We do have a new agenda item today, item C, discussion of the Governor's Executive Order 20-59. Would it be okay for the people to address us at that time, knowing that their comments are likely relevant to the government orders of the state or the county? If they, if they can't address this during public comment, I don't know that we, you said they can address this during new business, but there's no way for me to sign up to speak before those items. So, they just have to show up somehow, and then they are allowed, I guess, to come in the chambers at that point, or whatever, but they would have a right to address this on new business. So, I guess I have some questions about your substitute motion, and I would.
Well, that's what, we've had, we've had a number of times when there's been 10 or 12 people sign up to speak, and I remember under, when Commissioner Dennis was the chair, and he asked them, "Do you want to speak now, or do you want to speak on the agenda item, agenda item?"
Right.
So, wow, my intent is, if we have a new business item, and if that's what they want to speak to, then they can. Then why would we change that?
I just wanted to say.
And I don't know what's going to be, if the will, you want to, you bring this up, you brought this up to me eight minutes before 9:00 this morning. So, I didn't even have time to digest what you're bringing up to me. Nobody talked to anybody other than you, Commissioner. Now, and let me just repeat, if we want to formalize the air that we had, that was my motion, and if in the future, after the pandemic, or next year, or any other time, the will of the commission is to allow public speaking whenever they want to, like it was in 2015, when I wasn't even here, then that's the will of the commission.
Okay. I'll just say this, that I do think this is a commissioner policy, and the last time the commission actually addressed this as a body, we chose to go to the policy where people could show up and sign up and speak before our meetings. And so, that's, that's been the policy, and that was commissioner-led. I was there at that time, and I remember the conversation clearly. Just for the record, I did not, I did not ask people to come this morning, I did not buy them pizza, I did not, I did not, I did not, I did not do any, I had nothing to do with the people showing up this morning. It was very organic. But one of them had my phone number and reached out to me because he wasn't allowed to come in the building. And that's why this came up last minute this morning. So, I went down there and asked him, you know, some questions, and I found that there's about 12 people down there. And I just think that based on the fact that our website tells them they can do this, I think it's reasonable to hear them. And I have a problem with not hearing from the public. I think that it's respectful, Wichita did a tremendous job yesterday. I would commend the city council for being patient in hearing from 121 people. I think that the commission used to be very unapproachable and very unavailable to the public. We've changed that in the five years that I've been here, I should say, six years that I've been here, but, and I like our policy, it's been tremendously good for the community and for the commission to have people come and speak to us on agenda items and things that are important to the community, without a lot of advance notice. It used to be, they'd had to sign up before our agenda was even released. That was, that was very, very wrong. And I'm so glad we changed it. But I'm not willing to submit, I'm not, I'm not, sorry, I'm not willing to support this substitute motion. I think our policy ought to be, ought to be embraced as it has been for the last six years. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do want to hear from people, but I am very concerned about just changing policy on a whim. This is the first I heard that Commissioner Howell wants to do this. No one had brought that up to me. But the second piece is that this isn't just our building, this is the court building. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, but we've worked this policy out with Chief Judge Gearing about how we are going to handle our meetings and the people coming into our meetings and the way that we're working this through. Wasn't there a group that came together, Manager?
Yes.
As far as this process goes?
Yes.
And that's what concerns me about changing it, because this is the Central County courthouse, we occupy the third floor, so I'm not comfortable with changing this policy until we ask Judge Gearing what he thinks of this policy. And these, these people that are there, yes, I do want to hear from him, and hopefully, somebody from Communications can get them signed up to come to our next week's meeting as well, and address us at that time. But I'm just very concerned about changing a policy without talking to the chief judge, because you worked that out with Ellen House, I think Tanya was involved in that meeting, you.
Yes.
This isn't just the, I mean, the city council's a lot different, that's their building.
That is correct, sir. We, when we reopened the building back in May and June is when we had the discussions with the courts, and Judge Gearing received guidance from the Supreme Court of the state on how to reopen courts, so it was, it was a joint effort, a cooperative effort on how to open the building.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure I didn't make that up in my mind, because I remember this conversation, and that's why I'll support the substitute motion today, just because I don't want to run afoul of what the courts have already said we need to do.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Commissioner O'Donnell, I want to be very clear that we have a virtual opportunity set up in the lobby downstairs, which is on the other side of the security gate. We have about a dozen security officers downstairs, making sure we have a secure building, and people who are in the lobby downstairs are wanting to address interactively the county commissioners, and the technology's in place for them to do that. So, Judge Gearing would have no problem with someone outside that security line addressing the county commissioners. This has nothing to do with his courtrooms.
It just has to do with policy, and that's my concern.
Okay.
Okay, don't see any other comments? So, there's been a motion in a second to formalize and make it consistent for the public to sign up at 5:00 on Tuesday night, Tuesday evening submission. Madam Clerk, take a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. So, Tanya, I assume that we're going to get that changed right away. And then, if we want to address a different policy through any other commission, we can even have a staff meeting and do whatever. Okay. So, public agenda, first item, first person, you miss Tanya Hudson?
Yes, I am.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
You have five minutes, please.
Thank you. Okay, so you might be wondering why I'm wearing a poncho in the building. I mean, it's raining outside, but I'm not really sure that that's enough. We are taking such extreme measures these days with safety and security, and I have, I've noticed that you guys wear, even despite the behind Plexiglas, you wear.
You can, you can hand them to the clerk.
Okay, there you go. I have those two for you, because I feel like if we're going to continue wearing masks despite the extremely low risk, we need to take safety precautions in all areas of life. I brought my umbrella just in case, because I'm not sure if you guys are aware or not, but there's actually a 1 in 16 million chance that a commercial sprinkler system can malfunction. And so, if you have your umbrella indoors, if you're wearing your poncho, you're safe. The reality is that there are 644,888 residents in the Wichita metro area. There have been, as of Friday, September 4th, 7,162 cases, and of those cases, there have been 55 deaths. Now, that translates into a 1.1 percentage. Now, I ask you, would you go outside dressed like this if there was a 1.1 percentage chance of rain? My guess would be, common sense would dictate no. But if we are going to take such extreme measures with the coronavirus, then we need to probably address that across all areas of life. We need to carry umbrellas every day, we probably need to shut down fast food establishments because obesity is the number-one killer in America. I'm really concerned about vehicles on the road. You know, the statistics for vehicular homicide and drunk driving and deaths are just staggering. So, if we're going to take that same approach, we're just going to have to address it all across the board. The reality is that you have a three times more likely chance of dying from a motorcycle, or, excuse me, a bicycling incident than you would from coronavirus. You have a three times more likely chance of dying from choking than the coronavirus. Nine times more likely to die from drowning. One and a half times more likely to die from sunstroke. Eight times more likely to die from fire or smoke inhalation, or, excuse me, yeah, fire or smoke inhalation. And about the same risk as electrocution and radiation, extreme temperatures. So, I would hope that common sense would dictate that our risk is relatively low in contracting, and especially from dying from this illness. Now, I understand, and I will, full disclosure, I'm very new to politics. Prior to 2020, I didn't pay attention, I found it boring. This year, I have taken an extreme interest because of the rights that are being violated. For example, you know, I had to wear this mask. I have a medical exemption, I could have stayed downstairs and spoken from the technology setup that was down there, wouldn't have been able to bring you your gifts. But also, I didn't want to be treated like a leper when I'm healthy. I am a healthy individual. So, you know, I understand safety precautions are important, but I believe that we are treating people like lepers unnecessarily, and it is dividing our community. We have, and I don't have the statistics with me, I spoke yesterday, so if you fast-forward to seven hours, 7:23:30, you can hear my data that I presented yesterday before the city council of individuals that are suffering from this mandate. Medical exemptions are not being allowed. There are people who have experienced harassment, both verbal and physical. Again, you can refer back to that five-minute speech from yesterday, so I don't take up the time today. Now, I understand that, my understanding is that this measure was put into place because of the doctor who went on record, and it was his recommendation that we all wear these of the doctor who went on record and it was his recommendation that we all wear these until the end of time. Or until a vaccine is created, which I believe 55% of the United States population have already said they are against and will not take. So I would question what the logic is in making people mask up if they have no intention of taking a vaccine anyway. However, again, I'm new to politics, but my understanding is that that doctor was not an elected official. He is a contractual employee. And so my question, my final question would be, when are we going to have him removed? When are we going to have him replaced and terminated? And I don't mean at the end of his contract. I mean effective immediately. Because he is not, he is not best representing the health benefits of our community. And I would remind each of you that you are elected officials.
Can you wrap it up, please? Your five minutes up. Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes. That was the last point I was going to make is just to remind you that you are elected officials and...
Thank you.
That was all.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any questions?
I'm sorry?
There's no questions from the panel?
No questions? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is, I believe, Mr. Austin Henry.
Don't forget your umbrella.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you for this one. My daughter will love it.
Ah, you're welcome.
Good morning, Austin Henry.
Good morning, guys. How are you?
Madras. Thank you.
So my name's Austin. I represent the bar and nightclub industry. I run some pretty large properties. Fever Nightlife and the new Midnight Rodeo that just opened up this past July, middle of July. And then I'm also a managing partner of two other locations. 54 West Music Hall. And then we also have La Grange Disco on the west side of Wichita. My situation is unique because our properties are very large. So we actually rely on volume for our businesses. And I have one business, Fever Nightlife, in downtown Wichita that's been closed for a while. Right now, we're choosing to remain closed due to the 11 o'clock shutdown. You guys have heard a lot about masks, so I'm not here to talk about masks today. But I am asking to see if we can maybe lift the 11 o'clock shutdown time. Reason being is a lot of people don't go out until late. We're a nightclub, so people go out at night. And the coronavirus is not something that, you know, just expires at a certain time or comes out at a certain time. And it's definitely affecting our business. We've been six months into this now and definitely seen the wrath of this with it definitely affecting our business and to be able to bring in revenues. So we charge a $5 cover prior to 11 o'clock. We charge a $10 cover after 11. And people are still coming to our industry, especially our industry, very late. A lot of people go to the downtown district. That way they can var hop, that way they can go to different establishments. And then we're like, kind of like a final destination location. So you guys can kind of see how that's affecting our business and very, very tough for us to bring in revenue. Right now, if we were to open up our doors, we would probably be spending more money in staff expenses, heating, cooling, than what it's actually going to cost for us to do operations. So I know that you guys, I think you guys are voting today on Dr. Min's order in the 11 o'clock shutdown time. I would ask for that to be extended, at least until midnight. I'd like to see it lifted completely. I don't think that we should put restrictions on just the bar and nightclub business if we're not putting restrictions on shutting down gas stations, grocery stores, et cetera, that are still allowed to remain open. So that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's good to see you today, Austin. So full disclosure, Austin and I have been friends. We started working together in 2005 back at the radio station. He's been reaching out to me about this particular piece of the order. And just so, to be clear, this is something that Commissioner Meitzner and I have talked about a lot in our struggle with it as well. And I don't want to speak to the conversations that I know Commissioner Meitzner's had with Dr. Minz and others, but this is something that I believe there is support at some point very soon figuring out how to, how to get there because it's not just your industry, but it is a lot of restaurants. They have business that goes well past, you know, 10, 10:30, 11 o'clock at night that it, they struggle on knowing when to seat somebody. So if somebody walks in at 10:30, do they have time? So it's, it definitely affects the restaurant industry as well. So it's not just the nightclub industry. So I know that's something that, that I personally would like to see addressed in the very short term. So I appreciate you coming and speaking to this particular issue for not just yourself, but your industry as a whole. Because I know there's, you know, hundreds of bars and restaurants in Sedgwick County that are being affected by this.
Thank you.
And Austin, Commissioner Cruz has a comment.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for being here today. Could you give me just an age range of those who frequent your nightclub?
For Fever Nightlife, we're at 21-plus to enter establishment. On average, if you were to ask me what the prime is, probably 21 to 30. And then Midnight Rodeo, we're on the east side of Wichita. We are in 18-plus establishment.
So would you say that generally most, most of these clubs are kind of maybe 18 to 30-ish?
Um, yeah.
At, at 11?
On average, yes.
Plus? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Austin. I don't have any more questions. Appreciate you sharing your story. Thank you. Next up is Elizabeth Cochran. Not sure if she's zooming or if she's here. Oh, they are? Okay. Okay. Good morning, Elizabeth Cochran.
Good morning.
You have five minutes to address the commission.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, especially face to face, given what happened at the city council meeting yesterday. It's nice not to be reduced to a Zoom meeting, I have to say. 120 Wychetans showed up to voice their fatigue, frustration, and disagreement with the unconstitutional mask mandate and to humbly ask the city council not to extend it. I was there. It was powerful. It was a group of citizens from all walks of life coming together as a community for the common cause of liberty and the freedom to manage our own health and our own businesses. 120 people versus one speaker in favor of the mask. 120 to one. I suppose apparently we swayed some yes votes to no and some no votes to yes. And at the end of the day, the unnecessary mandate stayed in place. Now with some new wrinkles and parameters that I don't think we'll ever be able to reach. It'd be nice if people were just honest and just say, hey, guess what? Masks forever. That would actually at least be some clear direction in any case. To deflect accusations of mismanagement by the city council, Mayor Whipple pointed out that the city council is following the county commission recommendations with the Board of Health, that they weren't making these rules up. It's actually a lie because a few weeks ago, the same mayor bragged about how he and the city council were going to issue their own mandates to better respond to Wichita's needs. That's always the story of government overreach, responding to people's needs, as if we aren't capable of meeting them ourselves. I have some needs of my own. I need someone who supports the mask mandate to explain to me why we are limiting the livelihoods and quality of life of an entire county when only 55 people out of 516,000 have died. Every time I asked this question, I met with blank stares. If one of you could answer me when I'm finished, I would appreciate it. I don't mean that in a snarky way. I'd actually like a clear answer on this. This is a 0.0001% of the population that has died. I'm sad that people died, of course, but we should be rejoicing at this low number and not responding with more fear and unconstitutional mandates. This is not the zombie apocalypse we were promised. The only apocalypse happening is self-inflicted overreach of government agencies that are destroying our economy and ability to pursue our own happiness. I need to know why the county is following the directive of one, the directive of one medical opinion only and that one voice in an unelected role. How did Dr. Minz become more powerful than three elected bodies of local government? I need to know why, if masks are so effective, the public speakers yesterday were corralled at Century 2 and not allowed in the same room to talk face to face. Except for the one citizen that supports the mandate, of course, she was allowed to be there in person. I moved back to Wichita earlier this year as after 30 years away, I realized there truly is no place like home. I was excited to get back and start anew in a place where the community is close, supports each other, and knows each other. It's a place where we truly can love our neighbors as ourselves because we actually know our neighbors and show up for them. It's also a place where we can trust our neighbors to do the right thing. We are a community unto ourselves. We have the right to do what is best for our own community. Your commission has a duty to do what's right for this particular community. The 10th Amendment gives the states and the people the right to exercise powers not given in the Constitution. We're currently using that to go along with the herd in regards to mask mandates instead of taking an honest assessment of what our community needs. We should be using the 10th Amendment to support our community, to help it thrive, to buck this lockstep trend of the government telling its citizens what to wear, how to manage their own health, and how to conduct their businesses, if their businesses are even allowed to operate at all. The great thinker Thomas Sowell said, "As many have warned in the past, freedom is unlikely to be lost all at once and openly. It is far more likely to be eroded away bit by bit amid glittering promises and expressions of noble ideas. It is a noble idea to want to prevent death. It's also impossible." This pandemic is hardly a pandemic, especially in Sedgwick County. What this mandate does is erode our liberty extension by extension under the guise of public health and the manipulation of law-abiding citizens. We know enough about who the virus presents the most risk to now, the elderly and those with very specific comorbidities. We need to take the masks off of our businesses and our healthy, low-risk population and let us, we the people, we the community, decide what is best for our personal protection. It is not the government's job to dictate what I wear, how I run my business, and how I protect myself and manage my own health, especially in light of a virus that has proven to be less deadly than originally thought by several orders of magnitude. I'm here to say it's okay to admit we were wrong. It's okay to be honest that we overreacted. Honesty is power. So let's be honest. I'm almost finished. Our community is not a hotspot, not a danger zone. We're not New York or northern Italy. Cases are not deaths, and the pivot to conflating cases with imminent mortal danger is disingenuous at best and manipulative, manipulative and coercive at worst. The more you test, the more cases you get. That's it. Let's allow Sedgwick County to be the vanguard in communities taking back their constitutional rights and prove that we can protect our vulnerable neighbors and let the strong get back to work. Please stop this game of the emperor's new mask together as a community, neighbors, and as free Americans. I implore you not to extend the mask mandate any further and break this confirmation bias loop of government overreach. Leave the charge for liberty and truth. You have the power to do so.
Okay, Ms. Cochran?
Thank you.
Your time's up. All right. Thank you very much.
Yes. And I also urge you, there's a young man who's a veteran that has a suicide prevention group that is here and would like to speak. I urge you that you do give him a chance to speak today. He's lovely and has some very interesting information about suicide prevention. Thank you.
That's on the agenda today.
Wonderful.
Thank you. I don't see any questions? Okay. Next up, Margaret Brant. Suicide thing? I think so. Probably. Good morning, Margaret Brant.
Good morning.
You have five minutes to address the commission.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Margaret Brant and I live in the 4th District. I am here to request that you, the Board of Health, would vote to give the power of its citizens' health care back to its citizens. I know that you guys saw yesterday that when more than 120 people came to speak at the Wichita City Council yesterday to say that we want to decide our own and our families' health choices. I hope that, I'm glad that you guys watched the meeting because they were speaking to you too. The Wichita citizens are Sedgwick County citizens. This mask mandate is being ordered by the Board of County Commissioners, presumably because of the guidance of Dr. Minz, your public health officer, your local expert. And I have asked each one of you for the science that Dr. Minz has provided to you to back up his emergency health orders. Some of you didn't answer me. Some of you honestly told me that he had not given you any science. And one of you gave me a list of articles that supported your decisions but didn't actually have any scientific studies that showed the evidence that, one, masks actually prevent the spread of COVID-19, or, two, why any action is necessary at all to deal with the rising cases for a rarely deadly virus. Therefore, I emailed Dr. Minz directly. To his credit, Dr. Minz did answer two of my emails. However, Dr. Minz did not answer my third email and for 11 days, my question went unanswered. I sent him a few more emails politely asking him to answer my question. Eventually, he passed my questions on to Adrian Byrne, the Director of the Sedgwick County Health Department. She answered a few of my emails and then got tired of answering my questions. She said, and I quote, "I'm not going to be able to continue answering ongoing questions as I have many other emails and calls to respond to that I'm unable to get to in a 24-hour period." Another door shut. So I watched the town hall meeting that was arranged with Dr. Minz and two head doctors from Wesleyan via Christie to try to get any scientific, actual scientific studies proving that the emergency health orders are the right choice. They answered some softball questions and gave their professional opinions, but again, no science, no facts. That left me with unanswered questions like, Dr. Minz said that about only 5% of the population of Sedgwick County has had COVID-19 and therefore 95% of the population is still vulnerable to it. How can he be sure of how many people have had COVID-19 if not everybody has been tested? I've never been tested. He also said that we don't have enough tests to test both the symptomatic and the asymptomatic. If that's the case, then don't the percentage metrics need to be more flexible since you're now only testing symptomatic people? My M.D. says that high levels of vitamin C is the only thing that is needed if you get COVID-19. But Dr. Minz said that I need to speak with my physician about what needs to be done. If my doctor's opinion differs so widely from Dr. Minz's opinion, is he saying that my physician is wrong? And finally, I want to know from him, please give me a link to actual scientific research that, A, shows that mask mandates actually slow down or stop the spread of any respiratory disease, and B, that long-term mask usage doesn't injure or pose any risk to the wearers. All I get from anyone in Sedgwick County is conjecture and opinion, no facts. My concern is that you do not seem to have any actual science to back up your forced mandates. From what Dr. Minz says, he is largely basing his decisions on the local metrics, the importance of which has yet to be explained and seems completely arbitrary, and the guidance of the CDC. If Dr. Minz wants to blatantly follow CDC guidelines, which also do not seem to be based solely in science, that is up to him and it's up to you, excuse me, if you want to follow them. But in the real world, we have the option to take one doctor's opinion or to go get a second opinion. We also have the option of firing doctors who give advice contrary to science or who have staff who refuse to answer our relevant health questions. Let the citizens of Sedgwick County get a second opinion. Rescind the mask mandate and all lockdowns. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I also say that the fact that people who can't wear masks have to go downstairs feels a little Jim Crow to me because it's separate but equal? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brant. Okay. That's the end of the public comment. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring Suicide Prevention Week.
Okay. We do have a proclamation. I've asked Commissioner Cruz if she would like to read it.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas the, in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 12 minutes with an average of 132 deaths by suicide a day. Every 3.8 days, someone in Sedgwick County dies by suicide. Whereas psychological studies have consistently found that the overwhelming majority of people who die by suicide, 90% or more, had a mental disorder at the time of their deaths, and often, these disorders had not been recognized, diagnosed, or adequately treated. Whereas far too many Sedgwick County residents and Kansans die by suicide each year, and most of these deaths are preventable. In 2019, 94 Sedgwick County residents died by suicide. Whereas the mission of Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition is to promote and implement evidence-based approaches, local research, and community change to reduce the impact of suicide with the ultimate goal of zero suicides in Sedgwick County. Whereas in Sedgwick County, help is available by calling the suicide prevention hotline 24 hours a day, seven days a week at 316-660-7500. Now, therefore, it be it resolved that I, Lacey Cruz, on behalf of Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September 6th through the 12th, 2020, as National Suicide Prevention Week. The topic of suicide will continue to challenge us all to increase our awareness and education, and I call upon the residents of our community to join me in learning to recognize the signs of someone at risk, taking those signs seriously and knowing how to respond. With the challenges that 2020 has brought to our community and the efforts this has had and the effects that this has had on everyone, it is especially important that we recognize and challenge ourselves to recognize Suicide Prevention Week this year. I am...
A motion to...
But I would like to make a motion to approve this proclamation. And I just want to say that mental health, we have to reduce the stigma of getting help. I think that's one very important comment that I have heard all over the place. And suicide is very, has impacted my family. My grandfather died by suicide. My uncle died by suicide at the age of 39 and 17. So I take this very seriously. And I want people to understand that there are so many groups, and I'm excited that Dr. Claus, I'm so, thank you for sitting through all of this. Thank you for being here and being a part of the Suicide Coalition. She is here to accept this proclamation. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
There's a motion, and just a second.
There's a motion, yes. Sorry about that.
And Commissioner O'Donnell, second. No other comments right now, but Madam Clerk, call the rule.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Thank you, Chairman. I get a little, a little emotional about this topic. It's, as I mentioned, so I appreciate you being here, Dr. Claus.
Good morning, Dr. Claus. Thanks.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner, Commissioners. I'm Nicole Claus, and I am a psychologist at KU School of Medicine, and I'm Chair of the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition. And I just want to thank you for your acknowledgement and support of Suicide Prevention Week. Commissioner Cruz, you gave me chills and took the words right out of my mouth. As you'll see in a moment, Sedgwick County continues to have higher suicide rates than the national average, and this year more than ever, as our community faces the anxieties, social isolation, and financial uncertainties related to the coronavirus pandemic, it's important to support and de-stigmatize mental health treatment. And here in Sedgwick County, we have a helpline available 24/7 by calling 660-7500, and I believe there's a video highlighting some of the resources we have here in Sedgwick County.
Hello, my name's Rusty. I've lived in Sedgwick County for basically my whole life, which is 57 years. In late October, I was going through a hard time. I'd lost my wife, had some medical problems, became a little overwhelmed, I lost my job, was not in a very good place mentally. Came in contact with a Wichita police officer who saw that I was in trouble. He took me to the crisis unit, and after a couple days, they sent me over to Calm Care on Moore Street, was basically watched 24 hours a day, had people, you know, keeping an eye on me, talking to me about what was my problem, and, you know, while I was there. It was just a lifesaver for me, quite frankly, literally. They diagnosed me with deep depression and anxiety, taught me how to recognize when I was getting into, you know, in a problem area and how to deal with it. People there were just awesome. I owe them my life. They absolutely do great work there. I hope that actually one day, they have a bigger facility, because while I was there, I noticed that there were numerous people that came that there was no place for them. Every single person that I dealt with, you know, with Calm Care were just awesome. I had no bad experiences with any of them. I'd do anything I could for all of them because they literally, again, saved my life. I have a job, and I have a place to stay with the help of, again, with Calm Care. They hooked me up with a program, they helped me with my housing. I can't say enough about them. They've just, they were great. I would strongly recommend, you know, anybody having a problem to seek help there. They never asked me for, you know, anything other than just to, you know, be open and talk with them, you know, to continue, you know, having counseling and stuff to stay on top of things a little bit, but other than that, I'm, like I said, I'm basically out there 100% and doing what I gotta do to get by, so. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak, and I, again, I appreciate everything that Calm Care did for me. They were just awesome. I hope one day, if I ever win the lottery, I'm gonna build them a big building and put a lot of people in there to help, because I promise you, they do great work. Thank you.
That's great. Commissioner O'Donnell? Yes?
Thank you. I did have a question about that young man they said. Is he coming in to speak after the presentation?
I don't know that.
Well, I think we have a...
Could Emily or somebody look into that? I just want to make sure that, or Emily, just wait, Tim's coming up.
The speaker that just presented, he preferred to do that on tape rather than come in person. I'm not sure about the other young man that was referenced by another speaker today.
Commissioner, there's a, there's a, an agenda item about prevention of coalition. Maybe he's here to speak to that, either one, but I agree.
Okay.
Let us, let him speak.
Absolutely. That, I believe the speaker, the speaker, the first one, Tanya, had mentioned him.
Right.
So I just want to make sure if he's out.
Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, we do have one speaker that wants to speak on this topic now, the proclamation, and now there's an agenda item also coming up.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
The agenda item. Does he prefer to speak at the agenda item?
I'm bringing in.
The agenda item is later, or does he want to speak now?
Would you go ask him what he prefers? We could just wait one second, sir.
Because Dr. Claus...
Do you want me to go ahead with my report, or wait?
Well...
I'll figure this out.
Looks like he's here, and then we can do your report.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Dr. Claus.
Okay, sir, please state your name.
Thanks for letting me come in. My name is Scott Sexton. I am the founder and CEO of a new veteran organization here in Wichita called Forgotten 22. We focus on veterans that are dealing with PTSD and suicidal ideologies. The main thing that I want to bring up is the fact that with all this mask mandate, it is ostracizing our veterans. With, we're not able to go into the VA right now when you're having a emergency. See, I'm shaking right now because I have anxiety just standing up in front of you guys, but normally, I can walk into the VA to the mental health if I'm having a problem, and they'll sit me down with a triage nurse and a triage doctor, and I can be seen. Right now, you can't go to the VA without a appointment. You have to plan to have a mental health emergency. People like me that have severe traumatic brain injuries, sometimes I forget to call and order my medication that gets mailed to me. You add the fact that I can't go to the VA now and pick up a supply that will get me to when it's delivered with the mail issues, it's only hurting everyone out here. I just request that we look at some of the things that we can do to help our veterans with this issue. I cannot wear a mask. I have CLPD due to living right next to the largest burn pit in Iraq. I wore this shield just so I could come up here, but a mask, I hyperventilate, and I just can't do it. So, like I said, there's nothing against any of y'all. I just think when we're looking, it's, we're looking at suicide awareness right now, we've got a coalition meeting on McConnell coming up two weeks from now for every single one of the airmen there to talk about suicide. If we're gonna sit here and talk about it, let's figure out how we can help the situation. How can we stop the situation? The suicide has gone up tremendously since this mask has gone into regulation. You got guys that need to go to the store that can't not wear the mask, and they get kicked out. They're not abiding by the medical exemptions. I've been kicked out of multiple stores, and luckily, my wife has kept me from beating a few people and ended up in jail because that's just how a veteran is. You got somebody that's gonna confront you, get you, get in your face and start yelling at you, saying you need to do this, you need to do that. That's only gonna set the people off. That's all I have to say. I'm sorry for taking up all y'all's time, but thank y'all. Like I said, I am with Forgotten 22, and if there's anything that I can do to help with the suicide part, I'm always available.
Okay, got a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Or comments. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for your service to our country. Really appreciate veterans' sacrifices that you make, and I know you don't get thanks nearly enough, and so I want to say thank you sincerely.
Thank you.
Also, thank you for creating an organization that deals with this in our community. I think that's very commendable. Thank you for that. I do want to say you have a very beautiful service dog this morning. Really well-trained, obviously, very, very nice animal. But I do think your point is well-taken, that veterans, and really everybody that has medical, medical issues, need to be able to access services. It's a point that's not been solved in our community, and I listened to the, again, 128 people yesterday at Wichita City Council. Numbers of, numerous people over there spoke yesterday of very similar situation where they have legitimate medical reasons why they cannot wear a mask, and yet they're, they are ostracized, they are ashamed, and they're left essentially without services because either they have to somehow overcome that problem in some way or not have the services. And I think it's a, it's a serious issue. We have these exemptions and these orders for a reason, and especially when you're accessing medical services or accessing your government, I think those ought to be respected especially, but it's a serious problem, and I think we need to somehow, as a community, address this in a very effective way. Right now, we're not there. So thank you for bringing this to our attention today.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Thank you for addressing the commission day. Thanks for your patience as well as we were trying to figure out when you were coming to speak, but yes, for your service and for speaking out, and we do need to show more grace and kindness to people, especially in this mask world where so many people are concerned. You need to understand that there are people that have some type of emotional or even physical barrier to wearing a mask, and that's something that we need to remind ourselves and remind others. Instead of mask shaming, we should understand there is a, there's a mental health piece that we don't see what you're struggling with, because you're obviously a healthy, physically, you're a healthy person. So, so I just, I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate you coming and speaking to us today, because I know it's not easy telling everybody what you're, yeah, I can see you're shaking.
That's the reason I'm holding on to the...
Yeah, no, no, that's why it has arm grips there, finger grips there for you. But, but just thank you for coming, and thanks for what you're trying to do for veterans that we, as a society, need to do as much as we can.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I didn't catch your name.
Scott Sexton.
Scott Sexton.
I'll actually leave a couple of my business cards up here if you all want them.
Yeah, please, you know, I just, I just want to say first, thank you for your service to this country, and thank you for your vulnerability today. I know that it's not easy to come in front and public speaking, and this is an intimidating place. The first time I ever walked in, yeah, my heart raced a little bit, so I think it's important. What you're doing is showing that it's okay to not be okay, and I really appreciate you coming in. I don't know, Dr. Claus, I don't remember seeing you on the Suicide Prevention Coalition meeting, but if you'd like, those meetings are monthly, and if you, you would be a great voice to add to that call if you would be interested in joining.
I would love to join that. One of the things along with that, we usually have a monthly Veteran Coalition meeting, which has been canceled.
Right.
Every single month, so it's hard for us as organizations to even get together to talk about the things that we can do just because of the whole mandate. It's...
Yeah. Well, Scott, I appreciate you being here. I look forward to working with you in the future to find solutions for folks in this community who are going through more than anybody could imagine, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you very much for being here, and thank you for your service. Commissioner Howell and I are both veterans, so we have both seen something like what you've been through. Combined, we have probably 35 years of service in the military, so we thank you very much for what you've done for our country. I hope that the face shield works for you so that you can...
It's definitely a lot better than the mask.
Very good. That is one of several exemptions that we have in our order that Dr. Minz has put together, so we're hoping that things like that can alleviate some of the stress that you're feeling. Also, as Commissioner Howell mentioned, that we do have other exemptions in the order so that, especially if they see with a service dog, they should recognize the fact that you would fall within some of those exemptions, so I hope that that works out. But again, the 22, you might want to explain how many veterans are committing suicide each day, where that number came from.
Forgotten 22 is exactly what he said. 22, on average, 22 veterans a day commit suicide.
Very good.
Due to one reason or another. All of us have seen different things and dealt with different things that, yeah, you see me standing up here, I've got both of my legs, but I had a bomb to actually blow me backwards. I'm lucky to have my toes, I'm lucky to be here, and I have a traumatic brain injury. You can't see that, and that has kept me from doing a lot of things in my life, and I don't know.
We're very thankful that you are here. We appreciate what you've done. That number, 22, is tragic, and I appreciate you letting the public know that we have a significant problem, where we're losing 22 of our veterans each and every day. Thanks, sir.
And it has actually gone up since all of this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Scott, thanks again for addressing us, and good luck with your endeavor, and thanks for sharing some business cards, so we'll follow up, I'm sure.
Thank you all very much.
Have a good day. Wait, just a minute. So, Dr. Minz, we have another new business item on suicide prevention, just the coalition. I don't think it'll take time, if you can bear with us, out of respect. We were gonna flip the schedule and get you in now, but it's already gone on a little bit. Are you okay with that? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New...
Right, that's, that's Item B. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item?
New business, Item B, Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition, 2019 Suicide Data Report.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I have some data to share with you regarding 2019 suicide rates in our community, and I want to acknowledge the Sedgwick County Health Department and Regional Forensic Science Center and all of the work that they have done to help compile these data. So in 2019, we lost 94 residents of Sedgwick County to suicide, which is a rate of 18.4 deaths per 100,000 residents. This is a slight decrease from 2018, when we had 101 deaths, which was a rate of 19.7 So this graph here compares Sedgwick County suicide rates, which is the blue line, to Kansas, which is the red line, and the United States, which is the gray line. So you'll see that Sedgwick County rates are consistently higher than national averages and have been rising steadily over the past few years, but when we look at 2019 rates, it appears to have stabilized somewhat, so we are hopeful that this trend continues and that the numbers start going down. In 2019, suicide deaths were highest among 35- to 54-year-olds, representing 38% of the deaths and, the suicide deaths in our community. And similar to previous years, males make up the majority of suicide deaths at 72% of the deaths by suicide. And firearms continue to be the most common method of suicide in our community, with 50% of our suicide deaths being by firearm, followed by 38% hanging or suffocation, and 15% overdose deaths. And this year, we know that the real question is whether there have been changes in 2020, and there's always some lag in getting these data, but we wanted to start looking at this as soon as we could. And so we have pulled 2020 data through the end of June. It usually takes a few months to get all of the autopsies completed, but we're fairly confident that we have most of the numbers through June. And so what we see comparing 2020 numbers to the past couple of years is that there doesn't seem to be huge changes or increases happening so far in the first half of 2020. So we're gonna continue to monitor this for any, you know, delayed effects of the current crisis to see how that's impacting our suicide rates in our community. So I would say that even one suicide death in our community is too many, and I think this is something that the entire community should be involved with and should learn the signs of suicide and know some ways to get help. So I've listed some of these here in this presentation, but there are also trainings available through Calm Care, and there's a contact number on this last slide. There are also some other ways to get, to offer your support for suicide prevention. There are some new virtual activities this year that people can get involved with, and I would also note that the mental health and suicide prevention has been included in the Community Health Improvement Plan for the next couple of years, and so there's an email address if anybody wants to be involved in that effort as well. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. You briefly, the Choose to Talk, the new campaign that's coming out, I just wanted to, if you wouldn't mind briefly touching on that. And also, is there a text option? I know that, you know, some people, we have a text option with Calm Care as far as, you know, some people like to communicate that way. We live in a different world now, and can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. On your first point, there is a new marketing campaign that you may start seeing in the community, which is a collaboration between our Suicide Prevention Coalition and Stop Suicide ICT. So that will include some billboards and signage and also a website with some additional resources. And I know that there are national text lines. I'm not sure if those get redirected to our local helpline or if those get answered on a national level.
Is that something that we could track? Is that something that we could determine whether it's effective or people are using it? I don't just want to pull something out of thin air. I mean, I'd like to understand, you know, how people are trying to seek help to be efficient and effective.
Yeah, I know Calm Care does track the calls that they get to their crisis line. And I can check with them. I will follow up on that and see if they're using different modalities and how those are being used. I can get you that information.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Klaus. So obviously with the pandemic, mental health has been a huge topic. And we've heard about increase in suicides and suicide attempts. Do you track the attempts or is that a lot harder to track?
That is a lot harder to track.
Okay.
And we've worked with the Health Department and the hospitals in the community to try to track some of those numbers. It's an imperfect system, and the Health Department has been a little busy with other things these days.
Absolutely.
So...
So my question, and when Joan Tammany came and spoke to us about a month ago, I asked her about this, about getting the actual data about how many suicides we've actually had in the county. And she mentioned something about KDHE keeps those numbers, is that right? Or the state has them? Because we don't. So do we, should we go to you for those numbers? Because I see that we don't have any, June is the last month we have, so it'd be interesting. When would you expect to get those numbers?
It usually takes about three months for the autopsies to be completed and to come back.
So did we just get those two numbers?
Yeah.
Like...
Those are hot off the presses last week.
Hot off the presses, okay.
Yeah.
Because yesterday in the Wichita City Council meeting, I know a lot of us watched it, Councilmember Blue Ball was asking about some of this data as well, saying that they wanted to have the city compile some of that, so...
And KDHE does track these data as well. So that's the red line on that first graph that we looked at. So we can see state numbers. What we find, though, is that state data tends to lag behind national data and, or lags behind local data, and that the national data lags behind state data. So the bigger the scale, it just takes longer to get all of those numbers together. So that's one of the reasons that we work so hard here in our county to track what's going on here in the county. But we would be able to divide it up because we track locations. We would be able to see how many deaths are within the Wichita City limits versus the rest of the county.
And I don't think his information was really, I think he's more just wanting to know what our whole community is, because it still affects the city of Wichita, even if it's somebody in Hayesville or Derby or somewhere. But it's at least encouraging to see that our numbers, at least in June, were flat year over year and that it wasn't, because I think we hear these national rates have been going up dramatically. So that, and are we 100% sure of these numbers? I mean, you're confident?
Well, I mean, there could be some autopsies that are taking a little bit longer to come back, so it may change slightly.
So you do go back and alter these numbers sometimes?
By now, the 2019 data are pretty solid, but the 2020 data are preliminary.
Okay. Thank you very much. And at least now we kind of know, 90 days roughly, we can get that data, approximately.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank the doctor for being here, we appreciate it. Suicide is a critical issue that we need to work, and we are working here in Sedgwick County with our Calm Care and other folks. I don't know if you had a chance to see the 60-minute article that was on the news this past weekend about suicide, which was kind of fascinating, that they are now able to start looking into the brains of individuals that are contemplating suicide, and different things trigger different parts of the brain. And you can kind of pick out which individuals are susceptible to that and which aren't. It's in its infancy, but I thought it was a fascinating story that they had that shows what maybe with technology we can do in the future to help reduce the numbers that you have on this slide. Again, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. And I think you have one slide about the preliminary information this year. If you could put us on your calendar to, maybe like December, if it goes back three months, would be through September, would be, I'm sure that we'd all, because we're all worried about it and wondering. So that was a very valuable slide so far.
Yeah, we can give you updates periodically.
Reference it one way or another, but put us on your schedule, if you would, for maybe December to come back.
Sure.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one comment and one question. So looking at the trend line, this is not something new. This has been going on for quite a long time. Doing some quick calculations based on Sedgwick County versus the US, we're about 20 suicides higher per year for this community, if you're looking at Sedgwick County as a community. And that number has been persistently, consistently higher than the US for quite a long time. I'm not sure what we're doing to get that back into a better, more corrected number. But that, I mean, I know it's a problem, clearly it's a problem. One of the questions I've had, and I've asked this question numerous times in the past, I've never really got an answer, but do we know how many people complete suicide that at some point prior to that actually have reached out to one of our helplines that have discussed, if you will, the situation with some professional in this community? Or are these people who simply have never reached out and they end up completing suicide without ever reaching out? I guess that's a good question. I'd like to know, I mean, I think people who reach out, hopefully are less likely to do this, but the question is, how many people in fact have reached out and then continue on to complete their suicide?
So we haven't tracked specifically who has reached out to the helpline, but one of the things that we do track is who has received some sort of mental health treatment or mental health diagnoses. And we don't have those data yet for 2019, again, because there are so many other things going on in our community that have delayed tracking all of those data. But looking back at the last couple of years, ballpark, it's about half who have gotten some sort of help or diagnosis, and then half who have not.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other, I'll make a motion to receive and file your report.
Aye.
There's been a motion and a second. I don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meinsner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, Discussion of the Governor's Executive Order Number 20-59.
Morning, Commissioners. Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. During your Board of County Commissioners staff meeting on September 1st, Commissioner Howell had asked the Board to consider not having the Governor's Executive Order 20-59 apply in Sedgwick County, to explain that's the executive order that Governor Kelly entered on July 20th that generally requires people in schools to wear masks or other face coverings. It also has a few other provisions regarding COVID-19, such as requiring six feet of social distancing, although that does not apply to people in in-person classroom settings, making hand sanitizer available, and having people hand sanitize at least once an hour, and then also requiring temperature checks upon entry into schools. Pursuant to House Bill 2016, which was passed by the Kansas Legislature during its special session, Board of County Commissioners can issue an order with provisions that are less stringent than the Governor's Executive Order that's effective statewide. In order to do this, first you have to consult with the local health officer, and Dr. Menz is present today for that. After consulting with him, you would have to make a finding that the implementation of the full scope of the Governor's Executive Order is not necessary to protect the public health and safety of the county. And then you can make any other relevant findings as well. Before Dr. Menz comes up and speaks, I did want to briefly go through, I think, some of what was discussed at that staff meeting, some of the things Commissioners indicated as potential reasons for this. I think Commissioner Howell had mentioned the talk, you know, the confusion or duplication, if you will. There's really essentially three different orders or ordinances in place. There's Governor Kelly's executive order for schools, masks. There's Dr. Menz's order that generally requires people to wear masks in public and doesn't specifically name schools, but would apply within school buildings. And then also, there's the City of Wichita ordinance, which they extended yesterday. So there is a fair amount of overlap between those three types of law. They're all valid types of law, and it can lend itself to some confusion and questions, certainly on the parts of schools, parents, I think really, we've seen questions from all sorts of folks. I also want to talk through, I think another thing that came up during that BOCC staff meeting was a question about face shields and whether they would be permitted under the Governor's Executive Order. I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. And so I want to go through the current framework just very briefly as to what, if you would approve an order today to essentially exempt out of the Governor's Executive Order, what it would and would not do. If you had exempted out of it, kids ages six and up within schools would still have to wear face masks or coverings. So it would not remove that requirement. It would also be consistent with what the City of Wichita has in place within the city limits. So you would still have kids in schools wearing face masks and coverings. The key change, I think, really would be that Dr. Menz's order allows face shields, specifically has language that would allow that folks to wear those in lieu of face masks or coverings. The City of Wichita's interpretation of their ordinance has been that it would also allow face shields. But the Governor's Executive Order, the interpretation that we've heard from the Kansas Department of Education's legal counsel is that that would not allow face shields as an alternative to face masks and coverings. And so just to explain, somebody, a lot of questions have come up, which order supersedes the other order? And there's really, they're all valid orders, and they may have jurisdictional overlap, but you, the legal construct that's used is to say, well, what's the most restrictive? That's going to apply. There's multiple applicable laws, you have to follow whatever is the most restrictive. In this case, with regard to face shields, the Governor's is the most restrictive. And just to also explain, if you would approve an order today to opt out of the Governor's Executive Order, schools would still be able to implement any of those safety protocols and procedures in the Governor's Order. There'd be nothing making them have to stop those. That'd certainly be up to those schools, districts. Also, depending on what happens in Topeka in the next week or so, whether the Governor's Declaration of State of Disaster is extended, the Governor may be issuing a new executive order on this in the next week or so. It's worth noting that the Executive Order 20-59 does not have a stated end date, so if her declaration of disaster is extended, that executive order will continue past September 15th. If it's not extended the declaration of disaster, then her executive order will end on September 15th. So we don't know how that'll play out in Topeka. After Dr. Menz speaks, I will discuss a draft version of an order on this topic that's been prepared pursuant to Commissioner Howell's request. But at this point, I'd suggest that you consult with Dr. Menz unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you for the background. Dr. Menz.
Good morning. Thank you for your patience this morning. You got to see government at work.
I'm Carol Mounds, local health officer for Sedgwick County. Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like me, I'm not sure how you want to proceed, I have some general comments.
Well, I think if you, I think there's one area of, that's kind of helped this, is related to the confusion that mainly our schools have allowing or not allowing the face shields. And I think if you maybe want to address your opinion about that would be helpful.
Face shields were actually designed to protect healthcare workers from droplets and other secretions infecting them when they're taking care of patients. Unlike a mask, where we're trying to prevent people from giving it to other people, the face shield is really designed to keep healthcare workers from getting it from patients they're taking care of from it, secretions they might secrete while they're trying to care for them. So it's protecting them from getting it rather than stopping their secretions from going out. So there's a little difference. However, I would say that for people who cannot tolerate a mask, I would find a face shield better than nothing, because it does prevent some of their secretions emanating out from their body. So while I don't consider it equivalent to a face mask, I would consider it better than nothing for people who cannot tolerate a face mask. Now, I know there is some concern about people needing to see people's lips for hearing impaired people, it would be an advantage for them to be able to see their lips so they could learn the lip read. I will tell you, there are alternatives to the face shield for that condition. There are companies that make masks that have a transparent area over the mouth so that the mouth movements can be seen while people are talking. So I would say, in my opinion, it'd probably be most optimal for people who just medically cannot tolerate a mask.
Correct. Okay. I don't see any other questions right now. Do you want to address some other points?
Well...
For us to consider this, it is, as Justin pointed out in the public, we do have to consult with our local health officer, meaning you, if we're going to take any action. So, do you have anything else you want to...
Well, I just, since we, I have elected to extend the order, I just thought I'd make a few comments. All of our metrics are looking much more, much improved over what they had looked at like in July. Our hospital admissions per week are down, our new deaths are down. Unfortunately, our total number of deaths are at a level that's much less than many other communities our size. The new cases per 100,000 people are down. And the number of positive, the percent of positive cases on the people we test is down also. So all these numbers have improved once we implemented the order in early July. And I think one would have to assume that that order had some impact on those numbers taking a downward trend. We actually are now, our metric numbers are down at a level that we haven't seen since the second or third week in June. So I think there's circumstantial evidence that the order has had an effect in controlling the spread of this virus in our community. And because of that, I think we have less people who are sick. I know we have less people who are in the hospital. And I can't prove it, but I would guess some people haven't died because of this order limiting the spread of the virus. And some people who would have gotten it otherwise have not gotten it, so they had not, those people who get very severe ramifications from this virus, I suspect there could be a couple of patients who are now living today because this order was implemented and we reduced the spread of this disease. I have given an article that's recently published in the medical journals, in the American Medical Association's journal, reviewing what the evidence about masks are, and it's not perfect, but it does have data that suggests the masks do prevent the spread or slow the spread of this virus, both within healthcare workers and in communities. And I provide that for distribution, if you would like to see it. It's a very short summary article. I want to thank you for your support of the order that we implemented midsummer, because I think it has had a positive impact upon our community, and I thank you for supporting that. And I want to give you credit for helping get these numbers back down. I wish we could relax now and just suspend the order, but we know this virus is still in our community, and even the virus has been eradicated from Sedgwick County. We know there's great potential for it being imported back into our community, because there's a lot of virus in the country, there's a lot of virus in other countries in this world, and we know transportation is not going to stop and people are going to continue to travel. So the virus will, even if it was eradicated from this county, it will come back, just like it arrived in this county from people who came from other states and other countries. Also, just wanted to mention, I did provide you with some information about children. One reason I think we need to continue the order is because we have some potential headwinds coming up. This week is the first week we have tried to restart schools since this pandemic hit us. As you know, schools were dismissed shortly after it hit us. This is, this week, when the schools have resumed in our county, at least for Wichita schools, this is the first time we're going to see what schools enforce due to the incidence of this disease. And we hope, we hope that all the provisions we've implemented in the schools will keep this virus from transmitting widely amongst our children and our teachers and other this virus from transmitting widely amongst our children and our teachers and other school people. We also had our last major summer holiday, just Monday this week, and we don't, we felt in the past that our two previous holidays probably led to some increase of the transmission among people and maybe increased the number of illnesses. So that's another headwind we're looking at. And we also know that we're going to soon enter the season of influenza. We don't know what this influenza season is going to be like, but it's also going to complicate the issue in terms of respiratory illnesses. Not that it makes COVID-19 any more common or less common, but certainly will be the possibility of having two potentially lethal but serious respiratory infections circulating at the same time. So that's another reason I think we should be cautious at this point. I think if in October, when this order expires, if things are looking as good or better than they are now, we could consider reducing some of the limitations we put on businesses at that point. However, as I've said before, I'm not optimistic that the mandate for mask wearing could be lifted without seeing the cases rise again. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Got a couple of questions here. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Dr. Menz, thank you for being here today and patiently waiting through all the previous items on our agenda. But my, my question would be, you heard from my friend Austin, who has the bar, concerned about the 11:00 p.m. closing time. And prior to you allowing nightclubs to be open, restaurants were open until midnight, and then you opened up everything and moved it to 11:00. I just heard you mention that you will revisit everything in October because what, what I would like to have is just allow these business owners to know, here's a date that we think you might be able to be open instead of just waiting every week, then messaging us. And I, and I know, like I mentioned earlier, Commissioner Meisner is friends with people that have bars and restaurants as well that have been mentioning it to him. So is it realistic for us to say, so the City of Wichita just passed their mask ordinance through October 21 is their end date? And supposedly, that's a concrete end date from what Councilmember Tuttle was telling me. So would a realistic timeframe for me to tell these people in the restaurant bar industry that you would feel comfortable addressing that come October, May, that October 21? Is that when you'll be looking at maybe reducing some of those limits?
Yes, at that time, we'll have some opportunity to see what opening the school impact has been. Hopefully, the effect of Labor Day, if there is any one, will be seen at that time and hopefully mitigated. So if by October 21st, our numbers are still looking good, I think that would be a time we could seriously question whether we could release those limitations.
Okay. But, but no, in, in your estimation, not prior to that?
Well, again, I'm, we look at these numbers every week.
Oh, I know.
If the schools have no effect on the numbers, if Labor Day has no effect on the numbers, and they continue to go down like we've seen, I'm willing to seriously consider doing something sooner. But I do think we need to take two or three weeks because that's kind of the incubation period when you have something new like schools, holidays occur before you actually know the effect of that. Because it takes a couple incubation periods before we can see the effects.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I just wanted, I think you saw the article I gave you about the virus in kids. That's pretty, the best solid evidence I've seen so far. It's interesting that kids, we have good evidence now that they don't get as sick as the adults, and yet that study showed that they carry more virus in their respiratory tract than adults do. And so I think still the question is, are they better spreaders of the virus than adults? That article didn't really answer that. It just raised the potential they could be. And again, I think because of that article, kids are in school, teachers, staff with them, I would like to see what the effect of bringing the school back and see if the kids are good spreaders or not.
Okay. I know, I appreciate what you're trying to do. I just, I feel like the one thing we owe the public and the businesses is a little bit of certainty and not to give them any artificial hope that, oh, maybe next week we'll do it, where it's more realistic for us to tell them, no, we're looking at mid to late October for when we would extend that deadline. So I appreciate your honesty.
And I shared that article, as I know you had raised the issue about children and...
Yeah, absolutely.
So I just wanted you to know what research is out there, and that just came out a week or so ago.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, Commissioner Dennis, next, if I can comment, echo, or dovetail, I thank you for asking that because, yes, we are getting asked, and the word move the goalposts has always been talked about, even respectfully, but versus some that may not be so. But, but, so today being the ninth, Wednesday after Labor Day, school opening, so your comment that you want to see two to three weeks puts it through the end of September. So you'll, you'll feel like you can start looking at, at the data October 1st and clearly. So that's probably was part of your theory about going to October 21st, would give yourself a three-week cushion after that? So, so thank you for, and thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell, for bringing that up.
Well, thank you for saying the word goalposts because it reminded me the other headwind we have is we're opening up a lot of sports.
I know, I was going to say that.
And I don't know what the effect they're going to have on this virus.
Right, that's true. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Menz, for being here today. The item on our agenda today is really centers around the governor's order. And the reason that we're considering this is right now, there's three different orders that the people here in Cedric County, depending on where you live, have to comply with. So what we're trying to do is find out if there are findings so that we could at least eliminate one of those three different orders, and being the governor's order. But a couple of comments. First of all, I also communicated with Councilwoman Tuttle, and she says that their order will expire hard and firm on the 21st of October. So at that point, if we can get past this agenda item, and the city will be at the point where we may only have one order in effect, which I think is good for the public. I also appreciate Commissioner O'Donnell's questions about bars and restaurants on the time that they need to close. I think that we need to make sure that as you move forward in any kind of orders, that we take a look and see what we can do because we need to make sure that we can get those businesses open as soon as we can to the point where they can make money, and that's, that's critical for our economy. But I guess I've got one question. As, as we keep moving forward, we keep renewing the mask order, what metrics would you look at for hospitalizations, or ICUs, or ventilators, or percent positive? What, what metrics can, can the public look at on our dashboard and say, hey? Right now, I can tell you, I look at the metrics every day on our dashboard, and they're going in the right direction. But I just need to know what we can tell the public as they're watching those same numbers that I watch? What numbers can we, are we shooting for? I guess that's a quick, probably a lengthy question, but I don't, I don't know what our goal is at the end, what numbers.
Well, as you know, one of our main objectives with all the orders was to keep the hospitals so they could handle the patients they have coming in. You talk to the hospitals weekly. I think the hospitals are feeling more comfortable now that the, the number of people coming in per day and the number of people they have in the ICUs at any one time are at a level they can handle. So that's one metric I really feel we have to pay attention to. We're succeeding, but they're still seeing patients, but it's at a level they are comfortable with. They can provide care, they have enough staff. So that's one metric. Another metric that's often looked at is the number of positive cases, or the percent positive cases of all the people you're testing, assuming you're testing a lot of people in your community. Our number at its high level was 13.3%. And since then, it's gone down in the upper sixes to low sevens. So we're about 6.9, 7.1%. I believe the recommendation by the CDC and others is you could go into green zone when that number was less than 5%. And so that's a rough measure of how much of the people who are symptomatic actually have COVID as opposed to something else. And if there's fewer people sick with it, that means there's fewer people able to transmit it to others. So we're, we're better. We're better than we were. We've gone from 13% now to 7%. So we've gone above 10% to less than 10%. So that's a number I like to see. I'd like to see that a little lower. I'd like to see it be a little 5%.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Commissioner. And thanks for reclarifying what, what this item we're talking about, but we're getting the report from your background on your new order as well. So Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. So the, the number going from 13.3 to 7.1, that's the overall percentage positive test rate for every single age group? Is that right?
Yes, all tests.
Okay, so that includes senior living homes, that includes our jail population, that includes everything.
I have two numbers I look at, look total and enlist the community cases, the people who are out circulating, not the ones who are segregated inside a building like a prison or whatever.
Okay, so that's a good difference, I guess. So I've, I've had that question asked, if it's the community spread or if they include jail? And so does community spread include senior homes?
It includes, I look at both, with clusters, senior homes, but I consider people who are in a building that's segregated from the community as not out giving it to the rest of the community. So like prisons and long-term care facilities where the people are not leaving that facility and going out, they're not really out transmitting. So their numbers, I don't think are as important as if we take those out and look at the numbers of people who are circulating the committee, going to school, working, traveling to work. Those are the people who are out meeting other people and giving it to other people.
But to that argument, and Tom, Mr. Manager, last, last week when the sheriff was here, he mentioned how many people are booked in the jail and how many people are released from the jail. So that, that is a kind of a concern because they are being released.
Well, that's a little different issue. Those jail where there's a lot of in and out, I do think that's a concern. That's all I'll say about the jail right now. I do think that is a concern.
So I asked last week to have, currently on our dashboard, and maybe it's been changed, I haven't checked today, for the demographics as far as age range goes. I asked to have it broken down by decades instead of from 19 below because with schools opening, you know, right now, and, and I, the, the bar owner that was here earlier, I believe his name is Austin, is that correct, Commissioner O'Donnell? Yes, okay. I asked him, you know, to verify what the age range of people who, you know, frequent bars and nightclubs. And I, I kind of know the answer because I've been going there for a long time. But when, when you talk about, and I have it here, can we pull that up, the graphic that you guys sent us yesterday? Is this...
That, it is not on the website yet. The graphics are not yet done to the website, but the, the data is out there.
Okay, so the, the breakdown in 10-year age increments, we see the highest range of positive tests is range ages 20 to 29. So we have 24% of positive tests between that. And so, you know, if we see that number decline, and then we see, you know, the, the positive tests from, say, nine to zero go up, or zero to nine, and then 10 to 19 go up, then can, would you say that we can kind of pinpoint where the positive test results are going?
I think that's additional data that would be helpful in determining where the, the community spread is shifting.
I guess I'm just wondering if we're going to keep bars and nightclubs shuttered, but we see an increase in school age rise that's going to affect our positive testing rates, are we taking that into account as far as what populations are, could be seeing a rise in positive tests?
Certainly.
Because I don't want for our bars and nightclubs to be bearing the brunt of this when the positive test rise, let's say hypothetically, could be a potentially different age group than would visit a bar and nightclub. Do people understand what I'm trying to say? So that I, I just, you know, I've heard from some bar owners myself, and the gig industry, and musicians, and folks who make a living in these places, and getting them back to normal is of utmost priority. And so I, I hope that you'll keep that into consideration when we're talking about lowering our positive test rate, because we could see potentially with sports opening and schools being back into session, that this population is increasing our testing, our positive test rate. So that's, that's really all I have to say about that.
Let me come back to the jail issue.
Sure.
As I understand, the jail's not testing currently, so the numbers won't be in there anyhow.
They're not testing in our jail?
That's what I understand. Maybe, maybe there's something new.
I believe the sheriff's intention was to stop the mass testing. I think if they have symptomatic or somebody that comes in with fever, they would still test. But I don't, we'd have to double check with him today, but I don't think that he is doing mass testing anymore of the population.
Okay, so we're testing some, we're testing symptomatic folks, but we're not doing random sampling in our jail currently?
That's my understanding, sure.
Okay. Okay. And then in addition to, I just, for, for me, there has been questions about, you know, one person making this decision. You know, we've heard a lot about an unelected official making this decision. Dr. Menz, could you tell us who you, who you consult with? Who are other physicians in our community? I, I understand, and I have come to very much respect your opinion over the past six or seven months. I, I see the work that you do. But just, just for the public, if you could talk to us about the folks that you consult with here locally and nationally?
Sure. I contact frequently with the infectious disease experts in this town that are actively involved on a daily basis, taking care of these patients in the hospitals. There's also a small ad hoc committee of the Medical Society of Cedric County that I meet with periodically, have a number of different types of physicians to get their input on how they think things are going and also their suggestions. Also, I review the CDC guidelines, Dr. Fauci's guidelines or suggestions I review. The university has a couple committees that meet to talk about the disease and how they're, what they're learning about the disease and how to handle it better. So we do that by Zoom from the Kansas City campus, and I'm quite aware of what's going on that there with their cases and what kind of things they're learning and how to care for it, and what interventions they're taking in the KC metro area to try to control this virus. So I guess, I, I think I peruse a number of different factors, both nationally, regionally, and locally, to try to see what others think and get their opinion, and certainly the physicians in Cedric County that have been very instrumental in my formation of ideas about what's best for us going forward.
Thank you, Dr. Menz.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of questions I'd like to ask you, but thank you for being here today again. Number, number one, just a quick comment. One of the speakers earlier today gave a number that I'd like to clarify was incorrect, I believe. She talked about the number of deaths for our population, and that number actually is 1/100 of 1%. She added an extra couple zeros in there. But anyway, it's 1/100 of 1%, or 0.01% of our population has in fact died from this, from this virus. And so that's the number. I am curious, you, you issued another order, and the date on that order is set to expire on 10/21. Why did you pick that date?
I thought it was best to have a little longer period with the factors that I've just mentioned, opening up that we've not had before, with the schools opening, athletics resuming, with the Labor Day effect. I thought there was a number of factors we need to see play out before we could decide. I think there had been some concerns by people about the term being too short. It creates problems in getting the new order put together and disseminated, so this would give us a little bit more time to look at the metrics and then decide what the next order should be, if there should be any.
Okay, so looking at the different orders, thank you for that answer. Looking at the different orders, the executive order that's being considered today from the governor really deals with just masks only. Is that a fair statement? I believe there's other, in your order, Dr. Menz, there's other issues.
Right.
You talk about gathering limits and other things like that. But the executive order in front of us today is a mask mandate from the governor, and it deals with that issue only.
That's what I, that's what I heard the chairman say that we were, I was to comment on that issue.
Is there anything in that executive order that doesn't address something that's in your order that you're aware of? Is there any reason why the executive order is necessary today?
You're talking about the governor's?
Yes, I am.
I haven't reviewed it recently, so I, I'm not aware of anything, but I have to admit I haven't reviewed it recently.
This might be a question for, for a counselor.
Commissioner Howell, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Just to, to help address your question, there are a few things in the governor's order, executive... executive order that you're considering today that are not in Dr. Menz's order. It pertains to masks in schools plus other provisions such as temperature checks on entry to school. It also has social distancing requirements, which that is covered in Dr. Menz's order. And then a requirement for hand sanitizing or being available, and then also hand sanitizing occurring at least every hour with the staff and students. And so there are some provisions of this. They're all applied to schools, but there are some additional provisions that are not in Dr. Menz's order, but there's certainly some overlap, too.
Thank you. So if we did repeal this, it would simplify some of the confusion that's out there, but it would not preclude them from doing things like temperature checks or hand sanitizer.
That's correct.
They can certainly do that if they want to do that.
Yes.
I would just tell you, I don't think there's a lot of aversion to those issues. I do know there are some argument that temperature checks basically are not a great test. There's reasons why that's not necessarily a best practice, but that aside, I trust the schools to make a good decision on whether they want to do that or not. I don't know that we have to tell them to do that if they want to do that because they think it's a good idea. I think that's fine, but I don't know that we need a mandate from the government telling a school that they have to do temperature checks or use hand sanitizer. Those seem like best practices if these schools are certainly able to handle those questions.
Commissioner Howell, I would say on the temperature check piece, it might be worth consulting Dr. Menz on that as well. I think he has some thoughts on that as well.
Okay, I'd like to hear from Dr. Menz on that, then.
Again, there's not excellent science on this. I think the temperature checks would mainly be helpful when people are symptomatic. As we know, there's a number of people who are asymptomatic, have no elevated temperature, have no symptoms, and yet they're carrying the virus. So I would agree, it's not a perfect tool, and I don't feel as strongly about the temperature check as I do for masks.
And so if we went forward and repealed, if you will, rescinded the governor's executive order, and we didn't tell them they had to do a temperature check, so left that to the schools, you'd be okay with that?
I believe so. I think the schools can make that decision. The schools that decide not to do it, I think as long as they're asking about illness and those kind of questions.
With all of these orders in place right now currently, it seems like, again, there's overlapping information, but the governor's order doesn't really provide a face shield opportunity. We've done nothing that I'm aware of that actually would give the schools some relief on the issue of not using face shields. In other words, we think face shields are acceptable for our population that, for whatever reason, cannot use a mask, but the governor's order does not contemplate that. So I'm questioning if, again, we're a little bit more lenient, if you want to think of that, with the governor's order a little more stringent or more restrictive. What do we have in place right now in Cedric County that would allow someone to disregard, if you will, the governor's interpretation of not allowing face shields?
Commissioner Howell, Justin Wagner, again, I'll field that question. Right now, there's not anything in particular in place in Cedric County on that. I think that's part of the reason you requested this item today. I would point out, it's worth noting, there's an Attorney General's opinion, where Derek Schmidt opined on really two separate issues related to this executive order. The first was whether it's statewide or not, and gives county commissioners the ability to make an order that's less stringent. His opinion was that it is a statewide order. I tend to concur with that. The second part of his opinion was whether schools can, because there are certain, at least for public schools, there are certain provisions in the Kansas Constitution that give their school boards the ability to make decisions. So the question was, can schools just decide not to follow, can public schools just decide not to follow the governor's executive order? And Derek Schmidt's opinion was that, yes, they don't have to follow it. They can, if they choose not to follow it, they don't have to. I think that is a little less clear. I think reasonable minds could potentially disagree as to whether that's accurate or not, and I think some school districts had hesitancy probably in consulting with their legal counsel. I can't say that I know that for a fact, but I've heard from other attorneys who have an opinion that maybe that's debatable as to whether or not schools can clearly opt out of that. So, but I do think it's pretty clear, the part of Attorney General Derek Schmidt's opinion, that it's a statewide order that the Board of County Commissioners can opt out of, which is what you're considering, or make less stringent or opt out of, which is what you're considering today, is something the county could do in this situation.
Thank you for that answer. I'm trying to recollect, if you will. There's a number of counties in the state that actually have, I'm not sure what the right word is, they've rescinded or repealed, if you will, the executive order for their county. And I assume that some of them have, in fact, adopted something local for those counties, and maybe they don't have either one. Maybe there's no local order and there's no executive order in those counties. But it seems to me that there, we may be fairly unique in the fact that we actually have a local order on top of an executive order. And is there any way you can summarize, if you will, what other counties are doing in regards to whether or not they have their own order and the executive order, or neither, or one or the other?
That's a good question, Commissioner Howell. There, I think there's really a plethora of ways that different counties are handling this. We are somewhat unique in the standpoint that we have opted out of the governor's general mask order already. We did that in July, on July 2nd. And so now we have, instead of the governor's general mask order, we actually have within Dr. Menz's order a provision about masks requiring masks and face coverings. And so that's, I'm not aware of any of the larger counties. I'm aware of some of them that opted out of that and then opted back in or adopted their own order slightly different. And so we're a little bit unique in that regard, but I think for the most part, counties have taken all kinds of different approaches, whether it's the governor's mask order, school mask order, what their local health officers have done. It's kind of all over the map.
Okay, thank you for that. I'd ask Dr. Menz another question. Dr. Menz, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit this morning. It seems to me there's two competing ideas out there, and I would like to encourage you to maybe consider two different orders rather than a single order in the future. The governor's executive order that we're considering right now, it deals with masks primarily. I don't really get, it doesn't get into other aspects of gathering limits and things like that. And I believe it's your intention, I've asked you this question twice in the past, let me ask you once again. It seems to me that it is your intention, and you're welcome to speak freely, but it's your intention, regardless of our dashboard, regardless of our positive rate, it's your opinion that the mask order should continue in Cedric County indefinitely until we have a solution such as a vaccination available. Welcome to speak to that, but I guess my comment would be this. If that's true, why not issue an order specifically about masks and a separate order specifically about everything else, like the gathering limits and things like that? Go ahead.
I would take that advice. I work with the legal staff on these orders, so if their advice concurs, I'm happy to do that. I don't have any inherent reason why I have to have everything combined. I will affirm to you that I think the mask, as I've expressed to you in the article I've distributed, is probably one of the more effective means we have, not great, not perfect. It's one of the effective means we have of keeping this virus at bay. And so until we have something that's more potent, like a vaccine or a treatment for this virus, I do think it's going to have to be something we're going to have to persist in doing.
Well, if you and I would have spoken before you issued this last order, I would have encouraged you to split this order down the middle and deal with the issue of masks as one order and the issue of everything else as a review, something we review every four to six weeks or whatever. For example, you have in here, basically, we're still at face two, gathering limit of 15. We might have to agree to disagree on this. Maybe it's time for us to go to something other than 15. But that's something that's, I think, that can sit in a separate order from the issue of masks. And some communities are talking about occupancy limits. We have not done that here, but maybe that's the right answer. If we had an occupancy limit, perhaps we could see a baseball game at the new stadium, for example. That might be something that we'd like to see in this community. So there's reasons why I think this ought to be in two different orders. And second of all, I'd tell you, out of the 120 people that spoke to Wichita City Council yesterday, it's just 121 people, on the issue of masks, masks is the issue that takes the air out of the room. It's not the gathering limits, it's not the limits on number of hours that they're allowed to be open. None of those other issues are what is causing the huge outcry from this community. And let me just articulate, out of the roughly 300 emails I've received since Friday, I would say, anecdotally, I've not actually counted these up, but I'll tell you, it's vastly in favor of repealing the mask order. I'd say roughly 85% of those emails were in favor of us doing something less than the current order. On top of that, we had 120 folks that talked to Wichita yesterday, that was their position yesterday, to Wichita City Council, and then we had comments today, both in person as well as in writing. The community is speaking, and I would tell you that there's somewhat of a, people are less interested in complying with this order at this point. The interest in doing this is certainly waning quickly, and I think you're going to see, a lot of people are going to simply say, we don't care what the government says any longer, we're going to stop wearing these masks. And so for people who want to wear masks, they're going to wear masks, and people who don't want to wear masks, I don't think they're going to, regardless of these orders. Again, these orders don't have any enforcement provisions built in, and you and I talked last time you were here, we had a strong suggestion back in July, and since then, we've actually used the word mandate, and you made an opinion that you believe that's made a difference. I don't know that it has. I think that people are doing what they want to do, but I guess I'll just summarize this. I don't know that this executive order is doing anything for us right now. I think it's very duplicative and it actually adds confusion. Now, if you wanted to, Dr. Menz, issue an order that deals with the gathering issues and that type of thing, separate from masks, then the executive order might stand. But as is, since your order does both, I don't see a purpose in having both orders in place, and it'd be simpler, at this point, to repeal the governor's order. So I'd like to make a motion in that effect in just a moment, whenever the chairman's ready.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Menz, thank you for addressing, I know there was a little question, thanks to you and Justin about clarifying the temperature check world in there, too. And you don't have temperature checks in your order as of today, which is fine.
No.
But thank you. I would also like to share that I've had some discussions in Topeka, and Justin, you mentioned that September 15th is a big day for the governor's order to expire and then all the other executive orders going forward. And so we need, from my opinion, we need to move on this now because we don't need to wait and see what happens September 15th, and it is, there's been a lot of comments about the confusion. I think it'll help our school systems and help our, and if we take the governor's order out, then now we're down to your order in play as of now. And so you can, Commissioner Howell, I don't see other comments, you can make a motion that we will effectively opt out of the governor's order based on the document we have, if that's what you wanted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the chance to do that. And after we do this, I don't know if it'll pass or not, but after we do this, I would like to have a continued discussion for just a moment about Dr. Menz's order as well.
Okay, we're handling this right now.
It needs to be an off agenda item, we can do that later, but.
I'll make the motion then, if you want, unless you want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we would opt out of the governor's executive order. And number 20-59.
Correct. I apologize, Chairman, and sorry for Commissioner Howell. I think before, just for the sake of the public and stuff, I think Commissioner Howell's referring to an order draft that you've seen. Emily, I think she has some copies of the draft order. I'm going to briefly describe the order draft that I put together that Commissioner Howell had requested. It might be more appropriate to do that and then have a motion made, and I apologize, I just wanted to.
Okay, I thought everybody had a copy of this order that we would be considering.
Sure.
Or the, we're getting the words "order" intermingled.
I can do my best to be quickly summarized. It does require that the statute I referred to earlier requires making findings. This draft order includes three different findings, the first of which would be, as Commissioner Howell was just mentioning, the governor's executive order in this case could be considered duplicative and add a layer of confusion. That's the first finding, bottom of page one. Top of page two, the second finding, would be that there been talked about phonetics and the need to be able, for teachers and students to be able to see each other's mouths while learning words and sounds and things along those lines within a school setting. So there's language that would make a finding to that effect, that face shields could be utilized because they're more transparent. I know Dr. Menz did show you a face mask that actually is transparent, but that's certainly the vast minority of face masks and coverings that are out there. The third finding would note that, you know, temperature checks are, as Dr. Menz said, may be effective at screening people who are symptomatic, but not particularly effective at screening folks who are asymptomatic. And then the end result of that order would be, if you would approve it, is that the governor's executive order 20-59 would not apply within Cedric County. This is just a draft document. I'd be happy to field any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, correct, thanks for reclarifying. So we've consulted with Dr. Menz, and we're going to have a, in order to allow face shields to be considered in our schools and in our district, we need to probably opt out of this order as your motion stated. Commissioner Howell, did you have something else you were going to say on that?
No, just thank you, Chairman, and appreciate the preparation for doing this. And you and I had a discussion earlier, and you did articulate very well in this order being considered, three reasons why we should essentially exempt ourselves from the executive order. If I understand correctly, Mr. Wagner, we have to actually make a motion to adopt this order in order to be exempt from the governor's order. So the motion would be to adopt the order, adopt this local order here.
That's correct, Commissioner Howell. And just to be clear, the recommended action on this, take any action the board deems necessary, so it's up to the will of the board, either to approve an order, if you would deem it appropriate, to modify the draft order that's in front of you.
So I would like to make a motion, we would adopt the order of the Board of County Commissioners of Cedric County regarding the executive order 2059.
I'll second that. Any other, oh, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to make it clear that I am supportive of this simply for the fact of the clarification of masks and shields. That is why I'm supportive of this. And I didn't turn my microphone on, so I will repeat myself. I wanted to make it perfectly clear that I am supportive of this motion simply for the fact of the clarification for everyone in our community around masks and face shields.
Okay, I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Menz. Next item, please. Commissioner Howell?
Before Dr. Menz goes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to have a brief discussion about Dr. Menz's order. I don't know if we need to make another off agenda item to do that, or is it related to what we've been talking about? Essentially, last time we talked with Dr. Menz, we did affirm your order, and to the extent that the public has not had a chance to address the county commissioner regarding your new order, and the county commissioners have not had a discussion regarding your order to make changes potentially. I would like the chance to do that. Again, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or method to do that, but if we can't have the public speak, and we certainly don't have the opportunity to make adjustments to the order, but I would like to make a motion that we would affirm the order. Again, once, my intent of this is that the order needs to come from the county commissioners, not from the health officer. I know you have the authority to issue the order, that's fine, but the elected officials of Cedric County need to own this regardless of what it says. And we ought to make it our own. If we want to make changes, then we ought to have that discussion to make changes. But if we're not going to make changes, then at the end of the day, we need to affirm the order so that it is clear to the community that comes from the elected officials of Cedric County. And there are things I would love to change. Let me give you an example. I don't think face two is the correct number. I think we have to be looking at the occupancy of issue of your order, for example. The issue with masks, I know it's the thing that's, again, it takes the air out of the room. I would like to have a discussion about masks and whether that should be part of this mandate or not. Nevertheless, I don't think I've got support from my colleagues, and so if nothing else, I'd like to make a motion that we would affirm Dr. Menz's new order that expires on August 20, October 21st of 2020, and I will intend to vote no. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There's been a motion from Commissioner Howell. I do not see a second. Is there a second? I don't see one, so the motion fails for lack of a second. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act.
Okay, who's up?
Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stoles, County Manager, Lindsay will step us through three parts this morning. I think it's all receive and file today, there's nothing to vote on. She will give an update on the external funding program status, COVID spending status, and she's going to talk a bit at the end about daycare and business loans. So Lindsay, take us through the three items, please.
Hello, Lindsay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sorry, I hope I didn't just break the microphone. Lindsay Poursot, you're CFO. As Tom said, we do have three items to talk through this morning. First, on behalf of Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO, who is overseeing your external funding programs, I have some updates to give you on where we stand with each of those. So first, public health and social services continues to generate lots of discussion. We have 80 applications so far that have been received for that program. We have 80 applications so far that have been received for that program. Again, the total funding allocation between those two programs is 13.5 million. The financial stimulus review team has been meeting. They had a really good meeting last week to talk through some of the prioritization. They have a 10-point scoring matrix that they have sent out, that they are looking at. It would take into account many of those B.O.C.C. priorities that were expressed during your special meeting with them. That includes serving disadvantaged and at-risk populations, serving Sedgwick County residents or citizens, having a sustainable program, meeting current COVID-specific needs, PPE and cleaning supplies as the higher priority items to fund versus expanding new programs, expanding programs or adding new programs, excuse me, and then finally having it meet the Sedgwick County mission. The portal does close for those applications on September 20th, and that review team is meeting on September 23rd. I understand a good portion of the day has been blocked off, and we're planning to bring them, meal, to review all of those recommendations, or all of those applications, and put together recommendations to bring to you for approval. So, shifting then to safe operating grants. Again, you all allocated $5 million toward that program. So far, we have a little more than 500 applications, but as I told you last week, a lot of those are duplicates. And some actually maybe should have gone to the public health and social service portal. And so there's lots of quality assurance that's happening behind the scenes right now to get those in the right spot. The portal on that does close this Friday. And like I said, we have maybe 500 applications. When we came and talked to you, we said $5 million could potentially get us 1,000 grants. So we're about halfway there, even assuming every single one of those could be eligible, and not every one will be. So we still have lots of opportunity to try and get those applications in. If by the end of the week we aren't quite there, we'll come back to you next Wednesday with a proposal to potentially expand the scope of the program, or make some tweaks based on what we're seeing about maybe who's not eligible, or who maybe still needs some assistance there. So that initial review is underway, and the plan is to bring the first awards to you for consideration on September 23rd. So then we'll shift to workforce development. Again, of the 9.3 million that was allocated to Sedgwick County by the state of Kansas from their Cares allocation, you all authorized 1.3 million of that to go toward workforce development. We have received a few proposals. Those are undergoing evaluation, actually, by Whit O'Brien's now. They had developed some questions for us to relay back to those folks. I know Brent has done that. And then we'll be coordinating a session to ask those questions, to make sure that, of course, we are protecting the county and making sure that all of those costs are going the way they're supposed to, and will be spent by the end of the year. So we do hope to have also on September 23rd recommendations for that. It's going to be a fun day for you all. So then, in terms of PPE kits, again, of that 9.3 million, 3 million was allocated to put together kits for businesses. And so those supplies right now are being delivered to the InTrust Bank Arena, who is assembling those kits for us. We do have a distribution network assembled, or established, excuse me, with small cities and business organizations throughout Sedgwick County. So trying to get the kits to where they actually need to be, not just in the city of Wichita. They will have a drive-through established at the city of Wichita, and likely will be reaching out to commissioners to see if maybe you want to help with some of that distribution. And the last time we talked, we had said that it was our intention to get those kits assembled and distributed later this month. And unfortunately, just this morning, we found out that there are some delay deliveries, as there are with many things in COVID. And so we are actually looking toward the early part of October now to do those distributions. Finally, for cities and schools, of the county's direct allocation, 10.1 million was allocated to 19 cities, and roughly 3, well, 3.5 million was allocated to ineligible 15 school districts or accredited private schools. So last week, you all approved template agreements. Those agreements went out last Thursday. As of this morning at about 9:15, 10 have already returned signed agreements back to the county for cities. Three have it on their city council agendas, and we anticipate at least $294,000 going out on tomorrow morning's check run, potentially more if we can get those agreements all the way through the process by 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. On schools, 13 of the 15 eligible entities have submitted applications worth about 3.5 million. All 13 of those applicants have returned agreements, and so we anticipate just under 3.5 million going out on tomorrow morning's check run. So lots of good progress on that front. And so next week's spending plan report will certainly update those new expenses. So are there any questions I can answer on that portion? If not, I would recommend you receive and file that particular staff report.
Okay. Thanks for the update, Lindsay, and for all the hard work. Make a motion, receive and file.
Aye.
Been motioned in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm still there for you.
Okay.
And this time, we'll talk about the spending status. So last week, when I talked to you, we had spent 14.6 million. We're up to 14.9 million this week, precisely 14,915,182. And that is, of course, across all of our COVID spending categories, the general fund, the county's direct allocation of cares, the state's allocation of cares to the county, and then other supplemental funding that we received. So in the county's general fund, we remain at 1.3 million in spending. That's only up $6,000 from last week, and that was payroll for four temporary positions and/or overtime that was worked by certain employees. The fire district remains at $21,000 in spending with no change from last week. And we have spent $58,000 of coronavirus emergency supplemental funding for cleaning services, also no change from last week. Shifting then to cares, we are at $10,407,77 of the county's direct allocation. That was at 10.24 million last week. And so the bulk of that increase actually is because of payroll costs. We did have a payroll posting at the end of last week. And so we had $55,000 for health department temporary positions, $48,000 for that paid leave that is mandated under the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act, another $13,000 for other temporary positions, like the one that you all allowed us to have in finance. And then we had another $44,000 on miscellaneous items. So technology for those students at corrections who need laptops to do their remote learning, additional waste services to pick up all of the paper plates and things that we're using for meals and things like that. So for the county's direct allocation, again, we started with $99,636,917. Based on spending to date, we're at $89,236,210. And as I said, we've got some funding going out tomorrow morning, so we expect that figure to be smaller next week in terms of what's remaining. Our spark spending, it remains the same from last week at about 2.8 million. And then in terms of the elections funding, so the elections office did receive up to $420,000 worth of reimbursement from the Secretary of State's office. And so there has been significant activity from that allocation since the last time we talked last week. They have committed $74,000 for poll print equipment. So right now, the elections office tries to anticipate who will show up at advanced voting sites, and they pre-print specific ballots. Well, they expect lots more advance voting this year, and actually look forward to that, to try and reduce lines that day. And so they are acquiring equipment, again, this has been approved by the Secretary of State, that will allow them to print on-demand ballots at the advanced voting site. And they are looking forward to that, because the arena has agreed to serve as an advanced voting site for this election. And they expect a lot of folks showing up there. So this should be really useful and should also save money in the long run from not having to pre-print advanced ballots that aren't used. They also committed another $70,000 for postage for a standard four-by-six postcard that's going to every household with a registered voter in Sedgwick County. And there will be some information on that postcard. Yes, sir?
Yeah. Commissioner Cruz has a question?
Thank you, Chairman. When we talk about voting centers, have we, in addition to the regular voting centers that we have around the community, the InTrust Bank Arena has agreed to be a voting center. But what's the update, like, on the Cotillion or other places around our community that I asked about previously?
I know Anna, Commissioner, I know Anna Meyerhoff, I've looked at the Cotillion and at the Wave and some other areas. The Wave has close proximity to InTrust. The Cotillion had events planned and were not available.
And we verified that?
Hartman was the same thing.
Because I, and we verified that.
That's what Anna had told us during the last meeting. And same with Hartman, I think. She was going to look at that, too.
And Anna will be presenting an update to you all next Tuesday at your staff meeting. I just talked to her last night about some of the stuff. So I think she'll have lots of updates to give you then, and can probably talk about those specific issues, too.
I'll re-ask her again today, Commissioner, if you're hearing something different on Cotillion, but that's the last information we got about a week ago.
Okay. And she's going to update us about ballot box, drop boxes as well?
I think she has a host of things she wants to talk to you about.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Please continue.
Okay. Well, that postage update was actually the last item I wanted to give you an update about on the cares. It's called HAVA funding. So of their 420,000 allocation from the Secretary of State, they are at $300,270 so far. So that is all I have on your spending update. I would recommend you receive and file. And then I have one last thing to tell you about after that.
Okay. Thanks for the report. I make a motion to receive and file the spending report.
Second.
Been motioned in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Okay. Lindsay.
Thank you. Okay. So my next update, first, I want to address the item that Commissioner Cruz brought up last week about daycare. And that was actually a very prescient thing to bring up, because the state Spark Committee today is talking about a program statewide for daycare support. And so I have hot off the press, thanks to Linda Baker for printing this off while I was sitting here in the meeting. The actual presentation that the state Spark Committee is looking at right now, literally, as you all meet, they are meeting at 10:00 a.m. And so I have their presentation, and I just want to give you a few updates on that, because I think that may address a number of the issues. So when they had staff discussion last week, they had a webinar on this very issue last Friday morning. And as part of that discussion, they mentioned how much daycare was an issue for business, not necessarily revitalization, but just staying afloat. And so they have programs that have been proposed, and I will get a copy of this presentation to you all. But they have a number of data sets that have shown how significant the problem is that the daycare system was already overtaxed before the pandemic, and the pandemic has actually made it much more challenging. And so they are recommending programs to the state Spark Committee that actually would potentially go to their executive committee tomorrow for vote, and then to the state Finance Council later this week, with about a $50 million daycare program. And so what I would recommend to the commission is to wait and see what that program looks like. Certainly, since they are doing it, we know that it's an eligible use of cares funding. They also are using Whit O'Brien's as consultants at the state level right now. And so if that program does not adequately address our needs, then I think certainly we can revisit, looking at what opportunities there may be. But this would look at funding things like Boys and Girls Clubs and those other alternative providers that might be a spot for those students who are in remote school to go and work during the day under some supervision. And so it's a scalable program, as they describe it, where it depends on how many days of the week you're sending your child, everywhere from two days to four days per week. So I think lots more information will be coming out in the coming days. I'll keep my eye on it, and I'll make sure to update commissioners if that is acceptable on that particular portion of the proposal.
All right. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. So will we be communicating that via our channels to locally, our community? I mean, I know what the Spark Committee is doing, the state of Kansas, but how do we plan to incorporate that for those in our community that have that question, that might want to find that information on our website?
So I think right now, the whole program hinges on who the providers would be. And I think once that information is out, then it would probably be up to that provider to help us understand what the communication strategy is that would be most useful for them in getting that word out.
Okay.
But I, and I will make sure that we keep communications in the loop to help us in getting whatever information comes out on Friday out.
So, but as far as, like, our first responders, the medical community here, you know, they're eligible for this kind of support now?
The program has not been approved at the state level yet, and we don't yet know what it would look like. So we would need to go and look at that. In terms of a program for our employees, I think.
Because that's what we were discussing, right? I mean, that was the survey that we put out.
Right.
Was for our specific employees. How have we addressed that now?
And I, Sheena, are you planning to give a briefing on that after this?
I can't. The survey will close today.
Okay.
It's going to be out for a week.
The survey will close today. Sheena is staying from the back of the room. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay. So that is the status on the childcare providers. So then we also had had some discussion, and inquiries about a program that the county of Tulsa, Oklahoma, is working to do business loans. And what we have found through that investigation, and it's actually somewhat similar, I think, to what the state of Kansas did early on, they used an alternative source of funding to seed that initially, which allows them to have a five-year window. Cares would not allow us to have a five-year window on a loan program. In addition, because we do not currently receive community development block grants, those primarily go to the city of Wichita, it would take us quite a bit of time to stand up a program that would be compliant with U.S. Treasury. There's also some significant challenges and risks associated with doing a loan program now, making sure they're compliant and having everything orchestrated and complete by December 30th. So not to say that we couldn't do one, but if we did one, there is some significant risk that's carried with that, by virtue of it being a loan and making sure it's repaid, because anything that's not repaid is on the counties' tab. There is not a way to make sure that that loan is tied to a required closure, which is typically a tenet of many of the programs that we see. Even when we did have a mandated stay-at-home order, we had essential businesses that were allowed to stay open. And as we all know, that was a fluid process. And so it would depend on a point in time, how long they were closed, and all of that in terms of a business interruption. So there are a number of risks that would be associated with it. And then, again, there's that administrative burden that comes on in terms of compliance, verification, making sure things are paid, and then making sure county taxpayers are not on the hook at the end of the process to repay anything that's not paid back. So I just wanted to follow up on that request. If it's certain, certainly, it's a policy decision for the commission, but there would be some hurdles to get through with everything else that's going on.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So I spoke with a member of the Finance Committee, and they had mentioned that they were considering funds for the state fair. And so if that type of money gets allocated to a venue, essentially, could we check with Whit O'Brien, and could we check with, you know, the Spark Committee as far as, and that's not happened yet, that's just a discussion, but would the same philosophy that we're giving money to the state fair be able to give to venues of similar nature here in our community? Because what I don't want to happen is, I mean, you mentioned last week that we're about to have a lot of this money go out, right? You mentioned that once we, once these, our committee comes back with recommendations, we're going to be spending a lot of the money. It seems like it's getting down to the wire. Days are going faster and faster. We have until December 30th to get this money out. We're still sitting on $10 million in reserve that we have not yet allocated, although you have mentioned that we could use that for personnel costs. But I wonder, you know, this is a really bold time. I mean, there is a lot of things going on, and it's, you know, it's time to take calculated risks for our community to understand, to keep people going. This, the event venues, they have been, they were the first to close, and they're going to be the last to open. And what can we do? Is there any way, shape, or form that we can find a solution to help them stay afloat? I'm sure everybody in this room or knows somebody who has gone to an event. We talk about quality of life. We talk about getting back to normal. Culture and music and arts, those are part of our community. And I would hate for us to lose an event venue like Wave or Cotillion or Hartman Arena or all those places, because they're unable to stay afloat. Now, some are obviously better off than others. But I think it's important to really take a strong look at the quality of life that those venues bring us, and not leave them in the dust. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Don't see any other comments about, I'm a little risk adverse about the loan segment personally, but it's the will of the commission, as you visit with all of us regularly. So maybe you can get some feedback. of us regularly. So maybe you can get some feedback that way. Okay.
And if I could, just one, I want to give the state some credit. One of the things they're actually talking about today is what they call their higher fund. And so on March 20th, it says that Commerce partnered with Network Kansas to provide 5 million in short-term zero-interest loans for the hospitality sector during the COVID-19 pandemic early on. And so they actually used funding other than cares to stand that up. A million dollars of that came to 68 companies in Cedric County. And so that is something that's on their radar today to talk about what to do next as a, to complement your discussion earlier with their round three funding. So I don't think the discussion is dead at the state level. And certainly, like you said, we still have our 10 million in reserve. And we know that we'll be talking with you as early as next week about potential updates to the spending plan.
Thank you, Lindsey. I really appreciate all of your, the work that you and your team are doing. I know that this is countless hours. It's completely unexpected to have to deal with this year. And the speed in which you guys have produced all of the documentation that I have asked for, I know that you guys have sifted through multiple, multiple changes, many that are kind of very complicated. So I really can't thank you and your team enough for what you do. And I just appreciate all of the speedy responses. You are on it every time I message you. So I really want to express my appreciation.
Our pleasure, and the team is incredible. So I'll make sure to pass along your feedback.
Okay. Is that a receive and file?
That is a receive and file. If no more questions, I recommend you receive and file.
Okay. I'll make a motion to receive and file that report. It's been a motion and second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again, Lindsey.
And before we leave the item, Chairman, Sheena will just give an update, and I don't know that we need to receive and file on this. She'll just give an update about employment, cares-related employments for mostly Health Department.
Okay.
Here to give a weekly update on our staffing report. As of Monday, September 7th, we have filled 29 and a half positions at the Health Department. We've had some turnover this week, which is why that number has gone down. We have 30 positions vacant on our county staffing table, and 65 vacant positions with the staffing agencies. And again, we are encouraged by those numbers increasing on the staffing agency side. Do you have any questions?
Don't think so.
Just a reminder, we can-
It's a summary of each week, I see, so it's good.
Yes. And each week, as a reminder, we are working with the Health Department to make sure that we're meeting their needs. So those numbers are fluid as we have our discussions every week.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Sheena, you might just give a brief update again, and a reminder of how people can apply for these positions.
Okay. They can go to the staffing agent's website, but they can also go to our website, our career development, or our career website. And there is a link they can click on for COVID-19 jobs, and that will direct them, how to get to the staffing agencies.
Do we have a scrolling thing on our website at the top? Do we have a, do we have the ability to work for us? I mean, we used to have one.
We'll develop that, yeah. We can do something like that.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. If you have no other comments, motion to receive and file the staffing report for this week.
Second.
Then motion is second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. Tom, anything else?
I'm good. I might just mention before we leave this item, there is a Sparks link on our website. So everything related to Sparks, like the childcare issue, Commissioner Cruz, I think we can bolster that Sparks site. So that, I guess if you're a resident of Cedric County, I checked two things. I checked the Cedric County care site, and then also keep one eye on that Sparks site, the state site as well, because there could be implications for Cedric County residents on that as well. So we'll make sure we bolster that and add that kind of information on as they roll it every week. So, Chairman, that's it for this item.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, reconsideration of item two of the minutes of August 13th, 2020, meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Hi, Jim.
Welcome. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. We have a reconsideration of an item that was originally presented to you on August 19th with revisions. And this item was originally listed as a four each for a tandem axle dump truck, and that was equipped with a salt, sand spreader, and liquid anti-icing and de-icing system. So our revision is to make a recommendation for three each of these vehicles. And this is to accept the proposal from Truck Center Companies, their proposal number one, Master Tech, and the new amount is $597,024. And that's to establish the contract pricing for the option number one and the non-warranty items for three years at the rates listed. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval of the item. Okay. Any questions or any comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just curiously, did the per-unit price change since the last time this was presented?
Yes, sir. The fact that we went from four to three resulted in about a 1% increase from the manufacturer, because it was less quantity.
I'll just say, I don't mind buying the four vehicles. I don't know if that's still available to us or not. That's really not, that's really not my contention. My contention is the fact that we're getting rid of vehicles that I think have much life left in them still. And you've not addressed that today. I think it's maybe an issue with manager to address that. I don't know if it's our intent, I guess, to keep these vehicles a little bit longer, I guess, or at least one or two of them?
Two intents, sir. One was to buy the three, keep the best of the ones we were going to jettison and continue to push that vehicle, watch maintenance, watch mileage, watch work on it, and use that as, I think maybe Commissioner O'Donnell suggested that a couple of weeks ago, use that as kind of an experimentation vehicle moving forward. That was the first intent. And the second intent is to bring the fleet replacement policy back to this board at a staff meeting in the future to talk about, get into the weeds of this policy, and look at maybe a revision based on what the Commission wants to push forward with as far as a change to that policy.
I guess I'd like to see us earmark those vehicles for, you know, for future sale, but not necessarily put them on the Purple Wave auction right away. You know, I think we should use them for a while. Put, in other words, create a special class for these particular vehicles. They're not part of our regular fleet, but they're in a special class. I don't have a problem with buying the four vehicles. That's never been the problem. The problem has always been the fact that we're moving these vehicles out of our fleet and into a Purple Wave auction so quickly. So I don't know that I agree with what's been presented here. If we need four vehicles, let's get four vehicles. I would still support last week's motion. The contention was the points system and the disposition of the used vehicles. That was really the problem. So I'm not sure I can support this today. Thank you.
And Commissioner, just to comment to that, Commissioner O'Donnell and Chairman Meitzner, remember when we were at the city, that we had rent code seven vehicles. Those are the spare vehicles outside of the fleet, which were kept as reserve. And basically, you paid for the real costs of gas and maintenance to those vehicles. That would be a change of county policy. I might have Lindsey talk to that just a little bit. We had talked about that as a solution coming into today, and I don't, maybe we'd want to have to have a review of policy change before we go that direction. If you want to talk about that.
Okay. Commissioners, hello again. Lindsey Purusso, your CFO. So the item becomes, or the challenge becomes, that the budget includes a certain amount of planned maintenance, not just for Penny's fleet budget, but also the departmental budget that gets billed back for those expenses. And so the challenge becomes that the, if we buy all four, plus keep one, and we continue to operate that additional equipment, that is actually some fairly significant cost to Penny's budget to maintain. And then that, like I said, does get charged back as actuals to the Public Works budget. We build in, in budget, in the Budget Office, we build in those costs each year to a pretty precise figure. And so the challenge would become making sure that we have enough budget authority and a certified fund, which is the Highway Fund, and also enough budget authority in the Fleet Fund, also a certified fund, although it has its own contingency, to maintain that when what we're seeing is such significant maintenance costs on those vehicles, which I think Penny talked about the last time this discussion came up.
If I remember correctly, two of the vehicles were Peterbilt, and they were a little bit newer than the other two vehicles. I understand that those are preferred. And so I guess I would say, I would support purchase of four vehicles or three, if that's what you really feel like you need. That's really not, that's not my major concern here. But I think the issue of sending these older vehicles to Purple Wave is administratively, it's an administrative problem. I understand that the accounting of this is a challenge. I think we need to solve it. And whatever it takes to account for and to understand what's going on, at the end of the day, this is a conservative, money-saving, efficiency move. We're trying to get more life out of an older vehicle. Otherwise, we would sell it for pennies on the dollar. So we shouldn't be dinged financially in our bookkeeping to make that, to make that change. We should actually see some savings over time, not additional costs over time. So whether you have to use BOCC contingency or something, but there's got to be a way to administratively solve this within the bookkeeping part of this. I don't know what the answer is. But my hope was we go and buy the vehicles we need, and I'd at least keep the two Peterbilt dump trucks and use them as a test case to see how long they'll last. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. I will be supportive of this today. As the manager said, we had talked about it, and he is committed to do two things. First, we're going to keep one of those newer trucks, probably one of the Peterbils. We are going to use that as a case study to see how much more life we can get out of these. And then the manager has actually talked about, once we get through some, you know, the next few months, talking to some people in the truck industry to talk about, how do we maximize the life of these vehicles? And what would the life cycle of a 500,000-mile truck be? How do we do that? So we have that commitment to get that much further. And I know Commissioner Dennis has talked about a lot of his Peterbils and others lasting a million miles or more. So I think we're all under the same belief that we can get more mileage and more use out of these trucks. How's the best way to do it? Well, we can't do it unless we actually have a truck, and we're going to save at least one of these trucks, start putting more miles on it, and use that as our case study going forward. And that's the best thing we can do for the taxpayers, in my opinion, is let's get some longevity. I know all of us in our personal lives, we keep cars a lot longer for, with our own money. So I'm very, very supportive of this today. So thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you all going back and looking at this issue. One of the things that, I don't remember who brought it up at the last meeting, but it's in-service time, and that was one of the considerations on needing more vehicles because of the amount of downtime on the vehicles. I guess my question is, if we buy three and keep one of the old ones, is that going to get our in-service time up to the point that we need it? Or do we need to say buy four and keep two, buy three and keep three? I don't know where that cutoff is in order for you to have the in-service time that you're looking for.
I'll, Penny will get to podium here if she needs to. But as I recall, when she testified a couple of weeks ago, I think the uptime of dump trucks is somewhere in the 70 percentile range. Her general fleet policy, and Penny, correct me if I'm wrong, but is 95% plus. But these vehicles, these dump trucks are just not that reliable. So I would be, I'm fine if we want to buy four vehicles and keep two. I think that gives us financial challenges and policy challenges. You're right, Commissioner Howell, we can surely solve that. And I'm not sure we do that on the fly today. I think we'd like to look at policy and talk that over as a staff, bring that back to you, and maybe, and to Commissioner O'Donnell's point, we're going to dive a lot deeper into this and maybe philosophically change how we acquire dump trucks. Maybe we should buy a better dump truck, maybe not the cheapest bid, and try to push more miles as a way to overall save money for taxpayers, if you can show cost benefit on that. We'd have to prove that to you. So we were going to take a deep dive into this. I don't know that we want to try to do anything on the fly today, Commissioner. But whatever the will of the Board is, if you want us to buy three and keep one, we can do that. If you want us to buy four and try to keep one and create a rent code seven status on the fly, we will try to do that as well. We'll do whatever the Commission wants us to do.
I agree with you. I don't think that we ought to try and do things on the fly. And I don't know that we're smart enough here at the bench to make a decision on how many to buy and how many to retain. But I think that that's probably the heart of the issue is, what kind of uptime do you need in order to be able to meet the mission that Public Works has, that they need these vehicles for? So maybe we're kind of premature in even considering this today, until we know whether or not that what your proposal is is going to get you the in-service time that you really need.
Good morning. Penny Poland, Fleet Management. We're hopeful the acquisition of these vehicles will increase our downtime.
But will it get it to where you need it to be? That's the question. That's the heart of the entire matter, is when Jim Weber needs to send out his fleet here in another couple of months to clear our roads, do we have the vehicles that we need in service in order to be able to do that mission?
That's our goal.
Yeah, I would push that to the Department head. Let's push that to the engineer and let him answer that question, if he's prepared to do that today, and let Mr. Weber have a shot at that. But I know with EMS vehicles and sheriff vehicles, they need those vehicles up all the time. So 95% is the goal there. I'm just not sure about a dump truck, and we'll let Jim address that.
So Jim Weber with Public Works. And I think our issue is seasonal. So, you know, snowing in western Kansas today. When it's time to do snow removal, we'd like to have, so we built around, I think, 20 trucks actually on the road. We have 22 in the fleet, so we have two spares. So during that period of time, if it drops below 20, then we're not out doing what we need to do. Now, if we had, here in this month, if we had two or three out of service, it's probably not the end of the world. And so it's a, the overall downtime, I think, is important. I really think that's an important issue, but there's a point in time thing, too. And can you have them ready when you need them? So if we had 100% or 95% up all the time, then I would say we're going to go all year long. But the difficulty is, if it's 80% uptime at this point, or I think that's about what it was, and so we'd be down four or five trucks, and we're too short, two or three short on what we need. And then when we go into snow season, start doing snow removal, it's hard on trucks. And so they start, you know, they literally, we have people on call, they put people on call to fix the stuff. And we haul it in, you know, during a three or four-day snowstorm, we're hauling trucks back to them to try to get them back on the road as quick as we can. But it's a tough, and I would say, this is going a little off subject a little bit, but there are, I think, issues in the, not in motor pool itself or fleet, but in the industry. Getting these things turned around at dealerships is turning out to be a difficult thing to do. And so it's not all what happens here. And I don't know if that's strictly the quality of the vehicles that we're buying, or if it's the quality of the dealerships that we're working with. But we have stuff that gets hung out because, you know, they're waiting for parts, or, you know, the maintenance, I think, goes really well. But some of these things are more difficult. So I think, I would just say that if you want to do three in one today, I think we're perfectly willing to do that. And we'll take that, the retained truck, and we'll keep it in service like the rest of them, and we'll do a true, I think case study was a good way to put it, a true case study if we can. The problem with case studies is one vehicle is one vehicle. I do like, I find some way to look sort of at, you know, not ask the dealer how it works, but ask somebody else with expertise. If you had 1,000 of these trucks, what is the actual uptime on these trucks for what we're doing? And that data may be out there, but we don't have it. One is, you know, maybe that's a real good one, and then its twin would have been, the one we got rid of might be the lemon, and we just don't know which one it is. So we'll cooperate on any of these strategies that you want to do, because we're-
Well, Jim, bottom line for me is that you have a mission, and that's to use these vehicles to clear roads, to do all kinds of other maintenance that we do. And we have a responsibility to support your mission. And then we've got other agencies in Cedric County where we've got Fleet Management that maintains those. We've got the Finance Department that helps buy new vehicles and so forth. But the bottom line is that you're the one that's responsible to make this happen. And our job is to make your job as easy as it can, as long as we're physically conservative in what we do. And my worry is, are we making the right decision on buying three and keeping one? Will, is that going to meet the requirements of your mission as you move forward? Will, is that going to meet the requirements of your mission as you move forward? Or are you going to be constrained at some point because of what our decision is today? If we need to delay this in order to make sure that we're buying the exact thing that you need in order to meet your mission, I don't have a problem with that. But truly, the final decision is, you've got to tell us, is three-in-one the right decision? Is four-in-one the right decision? Is four-and-two the right decision? I don't know. That's the problem, because it's your mission, and I want to make sure that we support you in your mission.
So I guess I would just point out that the lead time on these is six to eight months before they show up. So all these trucks that you're looking at today are going to be in service through this next winter, because we physically can't get a truck. The other thing that I would just, I think the way the system works is, until the policy changes and the point system, whatever scheme you use changes, the next time, next year, when, literally later this fall, when we sit down with Penny to talk about what's on the next buy list, any trucks that you retain are going to show up every year. So we'll be talking about this again next year, if there's another truck buy, is, okay, is this the time to get rid of or not? So that's not bad, because that just means we have an automatic reminder that we need to look at this truck and see. So I guess, I want to give you a direct answer, but it's a little bit iffy, right? Because I just don't know how these things are going to do. But if it's important to try to better define the life of these trucks, then I think buying three now would get us, we'd have 21 trucks out of the 22 that would be in compliance with the policy. We'd have one that was an outlier. We wouldn't treat it like an extra, but it's basically one of the two extra trucks for snow removal. I'm willing to do that, just to try to work this out. In a year's time, maybe we see how that does, we see what the policy does, and we see what we can do going forward. But it's not really productive if every time we come by trucks, we don't try to figure out the problem, right? What's the right number? If we're just going to revisit this in a year, because we talked, you ended up buying four trucks, and then this is still a question that commissioners have, is should we have kept them longer? Well, I'm willing to try to find out. I don't want to do it with four trucks, but I'd do one. I might even do two, just see what happens. But we just, with the lead time, and I think we've got windows you've got to hit, I think it's important to try to get some number of trucks in production so that they'll be replaced sometime later next year.
I agree. We need to buy some trucks. That's not my question. I just wanted to make sure that we're buying the right number of trucks right now and be able to meet your mission, and at the same time, we're able to do some kind of a study to see what kind of longevity we get out of this. If you tell me three-in-one is the right decision, I'm fine with that. But I don't want you to come back next year and say, wow, our downtime was down to 80% again, and as a result, we're not able to do our mission out in the field. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a lot of things that need explanation. The 70% does need to be explained. There's a number of ways to calculate that. If you need 20 vehicles on the road, and you're only able to do 14, because the other ones are in the shop, that means you have eight vehicles unavailable. That'd be 70% if you calculated it that way. Or maybe the right answer is, maybe the way you calculate this, you say, I have 22 vehicles, and 30% of those are in the shop at any given time. That's not 14. That's something greater than 14. So I don't know how you're calculating the 70%. I'd like to know that. And then the second thing I'd like to know is, how long, how far back, how far back can we go and say, it's been 70% right now, but what was it last year, or the year before that, and the year before that? Because we may have a systemic problem here.
The software calculates it by, when we acquire a piece of equipment, we put in the hours of use. So more often than not, accounting a piece of equipment is operated between 8:00 to 5:00. So when a truck is in the shop with the work order open, it calculates that as downtime between 8:00 and 5:00. Once it hits 5:00 PM, the downtime clock stops, and it resumes back at 8:00 in the morning.
So is that on a per-vehicle basis?
Yes.
So it's not looking at the fleet as a whole? You're saying each vehicle, on average, is only available 70% of the time?
No. The 80% to 79.9% was dump trucks.
Okay, so each vehicle within that dump truck fleet is available, on average, about 79.9% of the time?
That was as a whole. That was the whole class. So that was 22 trucks.
Okay, but each of those 22 trucks, on average, about one-fifth of the time was not available because it was down, roughly.
Correct.
Well, seems to me, again, I don't know how long, how far back we can go back and say, this data's been about that number for a long time, but it sounds like we have a systemic problem. For us to, I calculated this on 70%, sorry, my numbers are off a little bit. Let's just say, though, if that number was 70%, you have 22 vehicles, if you, it depends on how you calculate this, but maybe you only have 14 vehicles available, because the other trucks are down for whatever. Maybe it's scheduled preventative maintenance, or maybe it's repairs. We don't know, because we don't separate the two. That's another one of our problems here. But regardless, if you do backwards calculation here, we need around 29 vehicles, be able to have 20 vehicles reliably on the road. 29 is the right number. So even if you buy all four vehicles and keep all four vehicles, you're still three vehicles short from what you would need to have 100% of our needed vehicles available to be on the road. So I'm not sure if we should get rid of any vehicles. It sounds like we need to buy four vehicles and not get rid of any. We still are not going to meet our 100% number. So I would like to see us bring this back with a, again, I'm just one commissioner, but I would like to see us go and buy four vehicles and have a plan to keep all four, because these are vehicles that, in my opinion, have life left in them. And it sounds like we have a need for more vehicles. So for us to sell these, because we don't have, because our accounting can't handle it, it leaves us in a service disadvantage. We can't provide the services to Central County that we need. These vehicles would be useful to us. Why sell them? So I think the better recommendation would be to buy four, would be to buy four and keep four. That should be our, you know, keeping one for a case study is not useful, not really, but keeping four would be much more useful. So I'm not in a hurry to sell these vehicles. I'm fine with buying four, but I think you need to bring it back and package it up with that being the intent. And so I don't know if I need to make a motion for that or not, but I'd be glad to support buying vehicles. That's not the problem. I think buying four and keeping four is a smart move.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a robust conversation. I would like to, Jim, would you mind approaching the podium, and Penny, too? I don't know who can answer this question, but the truck that we would use for this experiment, would we be buying the exact same truck later on?
Well, it's based on the same specification. So under the specification we're using now, we get three or four different brands of trucks, but it's the same specification.
So when was the last time that we purchased dump trucks?
I don't know.
2019.
So has the, I mean, will the technology have changed any by the time we buy a new truck?
There might be slight differences, but overall, probably not.
So it'll be the exact same truck?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I get the need to be fiscally responsible, and I feel that that is what you guys are trying to do with handling this fleet, understanding the need to have trucks in service. The staff time that has gone into this, I believe, is getting pretty lengthy. The staff time that would go into our finance department handling additional trucks, I think, is getting pretty lengthy, considering the things that we need to accomplish here. So Jim and Penny, you kind of answered the question, but I see the motion, or I see the recommendation is to purchase three trucks and keep one of the older ones. And so in light of time, in light of the amount of hours that you've spent, and I know that you've been doing this for quite a while, I would like to make a motion that we approve the recommendations of the bids of boards and contracts.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Commissioner Howell, then Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a substitute motion. We would push this off for another two weeks for us to develop a plan and a proposal to buy four dump trucks and keep four dump trucks. Thank you.
I'll second the motion. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Well, I'll support the substitute motion, even though I actually want to just move on, because I think we've talked about it a lot. But I do think Commissioner Dennis has very unique expertise in this field, and if he's willing to work with staff over the next two weeks and figure out exactly how to do it, I, with his knowledge and background in it, I'll support waiting two more weeks. We don't think that'll affect the...
Cut-off time for placing the order is September 30th, in order to get the February 2021 delivery date.
So we might have to have a special meeting then.
So Commissioner Dennis, can you work with them and come to a final proposal and deliver it to us, and then we can save 45 minutes of dialogue in the future about it?
Do we need to wait two weeks, or do we bring this back?
That was the motion.
They can do, they can make it come back earlier, but I would like to give you two weeks and make sure you bring it back within two weeks. We can, next week is fine if that works out.
If I'm reading this correctly, I don't know this so much as a fleet issue, this is a finance issue now. If we're going to buy four and keep four, this becomes a money issue, and I think we could solve this within a week, come back and report. But it's not so much a fleet issue as it is just a budget issue at this point, and we'd want to talk about that as staff and bring that back to you, what the pros and cons of that would be. The other discussion about fleet philosophy of dump trucks, I think Commissioner Dennis has a lot of good ideas. There are vendors within the city. I'd like to pick their brains as well. But that, I don't know that that can be done in a week. But this issue of buy four, keep four, I think we could solve in a week. It's a budget issue.
Do you want to amend your motion to it?
Let me add the, let me amend my motion and insert the word "within." I'd like to make a motion that we would purchase four vehicles and make a plan or program to retain the four vehicles, and bring that motion, bring that proposal back to us within two weeks.
You want to, I guess I didn't understand that the first time. You want to go ahead and purchase four right now?
No, sir. My proposal would be to purchase four vehicles, to bring this, bring a package back to us to purchase four. We don't have it in front of us today, unfortunately. Let's make a proposal to purchase four and retain the four, that would otherwise go to Purple Wave, as a package idea, okay? Bring that back to us for consideration within two weeks. Is that clear?
Yeah, I think we can do it within a week, sir.
Within two weeks is fine.
Okay. I don't know, we'll be, I guess the question is, can we deliver the trucks by February if we wait two weeks?
I would say make maybe one week if you could. Within two weeks would include one week, so. How's that for an answer? Sometimes those cutoff dates are pretty, they're pretty stringent on that. But as long as we get that order in by September 30th, we should be good.
I also make sure I don't disappoint Commissioner Howell. We're ready next week, sir. Could we do it next week?
I think my motion allows you to bring it back next week.
Right, okay.
I'm trying to give you as much grace as possible. If you, for some reason, can't make it next week, we have a special meeting Thursday next week if you had to. I'm not trying to pin this down to next week's meeting. You can do it whenever you want, and within two weeks. Next week works. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Can I clarify your motion to make sure that I understand what it is? You're not saying that we're going to go ahead and buy four right now. You're going to bring that choice back to us?
Well, Commissioner Dennis, we don't have a proposal today to buy four vehicles. We have one that says buy three. Buy four vehicles was last week. So if you bring me back the data we had last week, I'd be willing to support that part of it right now. I don't think we have that in front of us. So while you're bringing back a proposal on dump trucks, it should be to purchase four, like we saw last week, and then a program that would say, we're going to keep the other four, so we could add to our fleet and hopefully lower this rate from 79.9 down, make it closer to 100%. We need more vehicles, and I think getting rid of vehicles early is not smart. So we need more vehicles, let's buy four and keep four, and we can buy those four vehicles next week or whenever you bring it back. I can do it right now, if you have the data in front of us right now. I'm okay with either way.
My problem is that Jim Weber has got the mission, and I want to make sure that I'm supporting Jim Weber. Everybody else in this room is really secondary to this, because they're the ones that are also trying to support Jim Weber. Penny supports Jim Weber. Joe supports Jim Weber. Lindsay supports him. All five of us support him. I don't know right now, the way that your motion, that I understand it, is really the right number. I think that we need staff to come back, talk to Jim, find out exactly what Jim needs, and make a recommendation to us to be able to support his mission. That's where I always come from, is I support the mission of whatever agency it is. And I don't want to tie us down to saying that we're going to buy four, we're going to buy three, until Jim tells me that's the number that he needs, and how many does he need to retain? That's pretty simple, those two questions. How many do we need to buy? How many do we need to retain? And we need to bring the staff back. So I don't know that I agree with the motion, the way it's configured. We just need to bring this back in a week and answer those two basic questions. Tell me how many to buy, how many to retain. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I withdraw my motion. Commissioner Dennis, if you want to make a motion that's clear to you, that's acceptable.
Okay. Well, if it's okay, I would like to make a substitute motion that we bring this back in one week, and that we meet the mission of Public Works, whatever number of vehicles that that is, and the rest of the staff supports that mission. Thank you.
Okay. Then another substitute motion and second, to bring it back in a week. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. With all due respect, I think we, our staff has done, we asked them to come back with an experiment to keep a truck last week. That's what they did this week. So supporting our staff means to give clear direction and not change it from week to week. So I would say that to the staff members in our, that I'm staring in the face, that if this is the proposal that you're trying to bring back to us to appease the conversation that we had a week ago, I feel like the direction is being not communicated well enough, or it's being changed. Talk about moving the goalpost. I feel like you're having a goalpost that's being changed now. So I guess when we talk about supporting staff, I think giving clear direction that is consistent is how you support staff, and we can bring this again, but I hope we don't change it again because of whatever reason. I mean, Lindsay came up here and told us that we would have a budgetary issue by keeping these trucks. I mean, I just feel like supporting our staff means clear, consistent direction, and that's exactly what they have done for this week's agenda item. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Commissioner Cruz, with all due respect, I disagree, because they have not been able to answer the question, the basic question of how many vehicles do they need in order to be able to meet the mission? And that's really the heart of what my question is. When I ask them, do you need one, two, three, four, how many spares? I don't have an answer to that. That's the basic question. So with all due respect, I disagree. Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's bring it back to a vote, then. We have no more questions or a motion and a second to bring this item back after consultation with your various departments for support. That's the motion and the second. Don't see any other lights. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, see you in a week, Jim and Penny. Thank you for your efforts, Jim, as well. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item F, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on September 3, 2020.
For the record, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. This item was a recommendation from our regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on September 3, and it is for Insurance and Benefits Consulting Services for the Division of Human Resources. This recommendation is to accept the agreement with IMA Incorporated, and that's for a five-year total cost of $685,000. total cost of $685,000. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay, any other questions? I don't see any questions. I'll make a motion to approve as presented. Second. There's a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks, Joe. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good afternoon. Commissioners Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items G through S.
Okay, there's a motion, or presented, consent agenda, consent agenda items G through S. I'll make a motion to approve. Second. Been a motion in a second. Any questions about it? Any being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item?
Other.
Any of the Commissioners have other? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Yesterday, I was able to participate in an event by Zoom meeting in Topeka. I think everyone knows Dale Dennis, who's been in working finance for the state of Kansas for 53 years now. He's got a total of 60 years in education, and yesterday, he announced his retirement effective on 30 September. He has been an asset to the state of Kansas now for 53 years, as he was working in the Kansas State Department of Education. Everyone has relied on him for advice, and all of the superintendents, the districts, and anyone that's involved in education knows Dale Dennis. One of the things that I mentioned on the Zoom meeting is that I'm frequently asked if I'm related to Dale Dennis. I'm not, but the answer I always give is, he's just a brother by a different mother, and we are, we get along great, and I appreciate what he does for the state of Kansas, I wish him well in his retirement. The other issue that I wanted to bring up is that a number of our school districts have gone back to school, and out of my five grandchildren, I've got four of them in public schools right now and one in college, and I think that the things that we're doing to make sure that the schools can open safely and the teachers feel comfortable getting back into the classrooms are benefiting our students and our teachers, and I appreciate everything that's going on there. One final thing is that Cent School's opening has opened, and sports are starting again. Football is back in play along with the other fall sports. I know that there are a number of precautions that are being taken in order to be able to safely conduct those sporting events, but sports, along with things like JROTC and all of those other extracurricular activities that happen in school, connect those students to that school. And when you connect students to school, you keep them in school, and that is critical. So I want to thank all of the educators that are involved in what's going on right now. I know it's a tough time to be involved in anything with COVID-19, especially in education. I wish them all well. I wish a great school year for each and every one of them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Chairman, or Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to inform everybody, there's going to be a ceremony on Rock Road, dedicating a portion of Rock Road to veterans between the city of Derby, the north limit of the city of Derby by Derby Middle School north, to the south limit of Wichita. The ceremony will be held at the Derby city limit, and there's a sign that's been designed and will be erected and unveiled on Saturday morning, October 3rd, at 10:00 AM. There will be dignitaries that will be speaking at that event, and this was brought to the county commission by the American Legion, but it was a very collaborative issue, and I want to say thank you to the number of people who've been involved in this. But anyway, we are going to unveil that sign on October 3rd, so I'd like to my colleagues to at least be aware of that, get that on the calendar, and the invites will be going out to dignitaries hopefully this week, and it'll be on social media and other places. And so if you haven't already heard, please add to your calendar as a tentative, this is the date we're planning on right now, is October 3rd, Saturday morning, 10:00 AM. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Howell. Any other comments? I don't see any others under other. Madam Clerk, next item. I don't think we have an executive session, and so with that, we will adjourn the Cedric County Commission meeting, and we will call to order the governing body of the Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present.
Next item?
Public Agenda.
I am not aware of the public agenda items, or anybody has commented public agenda on this, so we will move to the next item, please.
Consideration Minutes. Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of July 1st, 2020.
Commissioners, if it's okay with you all, we have three minutes, fire meeting minutes of July 1st, July 15th, and July 22nd. I would like to propose that we approve the minutes of all three of those meetings.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Any comments or questions about any? And being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item?
Consent Agenda.
Consent Agenda. Tom?
Commissioners recommend approval, sorry, recommend approval of consent item D, David.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, just one quick question on that. I understand it's an easement alongside of one of our fire stations up in Bel Air, but that's really all I understand. I just want to make sure that by giving this easement away, that it's not going to preclude any type of future renovations, modifications, anything that we need to do to that fire station in the future, and I couldn't find that in the backup material.
You're talking about at the station itself, Commissioner, at the fire station itself?
The way I read it, it's, we're going to give away part of a right-of-way next to a fire station, because the city of Bel Air needs to do some modifications to the road, is what I was told. But my only question is, is that going to have any future impact on that fire station, on growth or modifications, or anything that we would have to do in the future?
I'm seeing it as temporary, but I'll let Rusty answer that.
So, morning Commissioners, Chairman Rusty leads Public Safety Assistant County Manager. So on this easement, Bel Air is going to take, as I understand it, about 15 feet of property on what is essentially the southwest area of the property that we own there, in order to do some road widening and provide some parking off-road, because they are also going to remove the access road on the east side of the station. And there's currently an access road that gives access to a park there. They're going to create parking on the backside or the west side of that park, which takes about 15 feet of the property that we own there for the fire station. It has no functional impact on the property, it has no functional impact on our ability to grow on that property. As a matter of fact, the valuation of that easement was about $1,300. They have proposed that there is some concrete work that needs to be done on our driveway that has a value equal to or greater than, and in lieu of that $1,300 payment, they will do the concrete work and make those repairs that will make the property, it will improve the property for us. It has no impact on our future use of the property.
I'm fine with it then, thank you.
Mr. Timmons has been working with Bel Air directly, and if you have other questions, he can speak directly to that, but he's been working with the city of Bel Air specifically.
Do you have your questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, did I make a motion to approve that item? But I will. Make a motion to approve the consent item.
Second.
Been a motion in a second to approve the consent item. Don't see any other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, does any other comments from the commission related to fire? If not, we will adjourn the fire meeting, we'll adjourn for the day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.